And welcome to the Board Agenda Meeting for April 8th, 2021. Ms. Hatter?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Good evening, Little Rock. Thank you so much for joining your Little Rock School Board of Education Agenda Meeting. We do not have much to cover on tonight, but we are so elated that you guys have decided to give us some of your time to stay in tuned on what is going on in your district. So, of course, I'm Vicki Hatter. I'm the Board President. I figured I should say that. And then we have our fellow Board Directors. All nine of us is here tonight, and we're going to do as we always do, open up with our pledge. And Director Johnson, would you please lead us in the pledge? Will you stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Johnson, for leading us in that. Director Callaway, will you share a word of inspiration with us this evening?
Again, I'd like to remind us all that what we do here, what we say here, what policies we put into place will affect us not only now, but in the future.
Thank you, Director Callaway. Appreciate you. And this month, this is April, this is the 110th day of all nine of us being in office. And this marks our third and a half official meeting. The December 17th was like the "hey y'all, how y'all doing?" And I apologize for my camera. Sorry, let me get that together. And so, as you know, every month we have either a word or a phrase, and this month is cooperative economics and how that deals with, of course, economics, and how will we be good stewards of what we have. And so, that is part of it. So, the target for this, okay, I have down a motivation. Let me throw... Director Morning, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, 10-second motivation?
Oh, I would be glad to know. So, hey, everybody. I'm going to pull with the artist, creator, and curator. And something that I want to share today that's been really in my spirit in the season is to be resilient. It's so easy to give up before we know we can actually reach the finish, but whatever you may be facing right now, just know that that moment is temporary, and no matter where you are in this moment, it is not where you have to be forever. So, be resilient, be relentless in your pursuit of happiness. So, whatever you desire or want out of life, you actually can have. Just gotta believe it.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. And that is going to take us into our target of our meeting. We're going to start off with two actions. Well, we will have action items and we'll have public comment before those action items. Our items will be, of course, our district mask mandate. So, until the Board will vote on keeping our mask mandate in place, or vote how the vote come out by the majority. And then we will get into our Digital Learning Academy, which is what was presented on last month. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Owong, and he will lead us in with the public comments and then going into our actions that I just shared with you all.
Just real quick, Ms. Hatter, before Dr. Owong starts, with our public comment tonight, of course, because we took action, we set up public comment just like we would on any other normal meeting, and set it up so that any of the speakers that chose to speak on the topics can have three minutes. We did have a combination of folks that wanted to speak virtually in a virtual delivery, but we also had individuals that turned in written comments that Dr. Owong will handle. And as part of our custom, we'll take care of the written comments first. Dr. Owong will share that, and then he'll set the stage for introducing the different folks who will speak in public comment to you virtually. Dr. Owong?
Thank you, Superintendent Corr, and good evening, President Hatter and our Board of Directors and viewing audience. As Superintendent Corr stated, the written comments, most of them were concerning the mask mandate. We roughly had about 12 written comments in favor of the mask, and one of the mask mandate, and one against the mask mandate. And, of course, all of these written comments will be provided to you, but most of the written comments that centered around in favor of the mask mandate talked about the fact that we still have students who are below the age of 16, who are not vaccinated. And at this time, we have to consider our students' health, as well as our staff members who have not been vaccinated as well. And so, in light of that, they are asking that we continue with the mask mandate throughout the school district, in all buildings, and in all schools. And, of course, the one person who's not in favor of it stated that because, in light of the fact that the governor has released, or no longer has a mask mandate in the state, our students should not be required to wear a mask in the school building. That, at this point, is just ridiculous for us to continue to have that mask mandated, and that all teachers should now be vaccinated. And so, that was the comment that's not in favor of the mask mandate. And then we had one last written comment about the disappointment in the school district and how the transition of hall administration was handled, and that it was unfair that most of the community knew about the transition before the actual staff knew all the details. But the comment does say that they appreciate Mr. Corr and Mr. Rutherford for taking the time to come to the staff and to explain the next steps from that. And so, she just wanted you all to know how she felt about the community knowing about it before the staff, it getting out to the community prior to the staff receiving the notification. So, that concludes the written comments. Of course, as stated, those will be shared with you via email. We do have five individuals, community members, who have signed up for public comment via Zoom. And the first one would be Mrs. Rebecca Olson. Mrs. Olson, you now have three minutes for your public comment. Oh, she's reconnecting, so let me go to... Ms. Olson, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, you have three minutes for your public comment.
Okay, so I speak for all of the parents and teachers and students who want the mask mandate lifted. The teachers have all had a chance to be vaccinated at this point. Children are not the ones who are at risk for getting COVID-19, getting really sick from it. There is communication problems with masks, especially for kindergarten, when they're learning how to read. You can't see people's mouths with masks. It's hard to articulate, especially with the littler kids. They're hard to understand as it is, and having a mask on their faces just makes it even that much more difficult. The social interaction, social aspect of school, it is affecting that terribly. They can't talk to each other like they used to. They can't see their expressions or other kids' emotions. They have also... Let me stay with it. The mask mandate's been lifted by the governor, and several other schools in Arkansas have already lifted their mask mandate. Marmell, actually, has lifted their mask mandate, but actually hasn't even had kindergarteners. They only made fourth grade and up wear masks this whole entire time. And there hasn't been like a hotspot in Marmell schools. We didn't see an uptick in COVID there. Also, I think that we'll lose a lot of teachers and students who don't want to wear the masks, and they'll move to other districts who don't make them wear the masks. So, they are also at risk because it's so hot and humid here. They can get bacterial pneumonia because they have to wear them inside, outside. When it's hot in the sun, during recess, during PE, it's just a lot for little kids. I'm talking mainly about elementary kids. And all the negative aspects of mask wearing, it makes them even touch their face more than they would normally because they can't wear a mask properly, and so they're always messing with their nose and touching their face to adjust their mask. It doesn't work for the kids or the teachers. And I know everyone wants to be safe, and everyone's vaccinated or has had a chance to be vaccinated. Now, the children are not at high risk, and so I think it's time to lift the mandate.
Ms. Wilson, are we at time?
It just went off. That was your three minutes. Thank you so much, Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Next, we have, and I don't see her in here, but I just want to make sure that we give her the opportunity to speak if she is, Mrs. Tiffany Lindsay. Mrs. Tiffany Lindsay, okay. Next, we have Dr. Anika Whitfield. Dr. Whitfield?
Dr. Owong, before you go to Dr. Whitfield with Ms. Lindsay, was she one of the folks that put in a written comment as well? And if she did, you might want to just read it before we have Dr. Whitfield go. And while you're looking, maybe... Okay, go ahead.
She does. And her statement states, "I strongly disagree with the mask mandate in the continuation for Virtual Fridays. The science simply does not support being out of school on Fridays, nor wearing masks. There is no science at all that supports that people need to do their research. I have between the vaccine signs proving that children rarely getting the virus, then all of the rest of the population having had the virus equal herd immunity, especially in another five months when we return in the fall. Our child is in kindergarten, a crucial year to bridge the gap between not knowing how to read or write and being expected to do so in first grade or fail. I send her to school because I'm not a school teacher. That is their job to get up and get going on Fridays. These children need five days of instruction. Virtual learning is a joke, especially through this system, schoolagey. I would be willing to bet most of you have never been on it to see what a child has to do. Most of the virtual learners do not even log on to begin with." That ends her comments. Next, we have Dr. Anika Whitfield. Dr. Whitfield, you have your three minutes now.
Thank you for giving me three minutes. I wanted to first start off by saying that I understand that there were people who were not aware that during this agenda meeting, there were going to be action items with which people could speak publicly. And so I think it's really imperative that the Little Rock School District does due diligence to make sure, whether it's through text messages or however, when there are action items that people can speak to, that the public is made aware. I happened to see it on one of our board members' Facebook pages, and so that's how I was even aware that this was happening. I also want to address some of the concerns. I am a doctor, and so I work in the medical field. I do a lot of research and want to share that there are other states who have decided to remain virtual because the numbers are increasing in age groups that are 30 years of age and less. And that's because in some states, especially there, have been less persons vaccinated. But we do know that in Pulaski County, our numbers continue to be up in the top five. And so, we want to be very mindful that removing masks is not a wise thing to do until everyone becomes vaccinated. And we know that in the state of Arkansas, you can be vaccinated up to the age, or as low as the age of 16, but that does not preclude you from getting the virus itself. For the parent who earlier said that there aren't, are there masks that prevent you from reading and learning to read, I have an example of a mask where it's clear-mouthed. There was actually a student that created this idea and this concept, and so I believe that we should encourage in our educational system creative ways to wear masks and be safe in wearing those masks to prevent the spread of coronavirus, which we know is deadly. We still are seeing Arkansans dying every day. I also wanted to address the Virtual Academy or the Digital Academy. I was only given three minutes to talk about both, but I'm in favor of wearing the mask, to be clear. And I think that we should do that to be safe and to be medically sound and preventive. And I also believe that the Little Rock School District has received millions of dollars to help provide those PPEs, and we can be creative again in the ways that we use those to include the innovative technology of our students, right? Our students are very wise, as well as our educators. So, I think that there are some wise ways that we can implement those masks and make sure that everyone has them and has access to them. But as it relates to the Digital Academy, I'm concerned because we already don't have equity in our public schools. We already have students who are challenged by the digital divide. And I know that part of what the Little Rock School District is trying to do is to be competitive with other districts, but I think one of the best ways to be competitive is to provide the best education possible for every student in every classroom. And I think if we can do that, people will come running to the Little Rock School District. And I think part of doing that is to involve and engage parents and students in decision-making processes. And currently, the way that our Board is set up-
Thank you, Dr. Whitfield. That's your three minutes. Thank you for coming.
Next, we have Megan Prettyman. Mrs. Prettyman, you have your three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Little Rock School District Board of Education. My name is Megan Prettyman, and I am actually a teacher in the district. And I actually want to talk about both the mask mandate and the Little Rock Virtual Academies. First, the mask mandate. I think if we were to end the mask mandate now, it would be premature. Currently, the CDC does recommend universal masking in all schools. This is based on their guidelines that were released halfway through March. I don't think lifting the mask mandate before all students have the opportunity to be vaccinated is going to be productive or healthy, or create the best learning environment for students, especially the students who are coming back into the schools right now because they feel safe. I have students who have been virtual learners for most of the year, and because there have been a decline in cases and they feel safe with the masks in place, some of those students are returning to class, and these are students who I haven't been able to interact with. I'm afraid if we lift the mask mandate now, those students who feel safe with masks on will return to virtual learning, and I will no longer have the ability to educate them in the classroom as well as I do currently. Shifting gears to talk a little bit about the Virtual Learning Academies, I think having a Virtual Learning Academy is really important, and I think it is the right direction for the district. And I think approving them sooner rather than later is going to be crucial for the success of these programs. But I would also advocate that any approval be contingent on input from a variety of stakeholders. From my understanding, the committees that developed the plans you're looking at tonight were solely consisted of administrators. So, making sure, and if I'm wrong on that, please, someone correct me after my three minutes. But I know I did not see a way for teachers to provide input onto those committees, and I asked for that at one point. So, that's something I just would like to have on your radio, to make sure that as those are developed, that all stakeholders have ability to comment. I know I'm almost out of time, but I do know that I'm also a member of the PPC, and the PPC, I know Miss Liki Boston normally speaks at our normal meetings. She can't be here. And so, I did just want to let you know that at our PPC meeting this previous Monday, there was a vote made on a motion to recommend from the certified PPC, and I'm not looking at it directly, but to recommend that from the PPC certified, we recommend continuing the mask mandate at all times, including at recess, unless there was a recommendation from a physician or-
Thank you, Ms. Prettyman. Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Kaitlyn Craig, and I do not see her listed in the participants, but she did send comments as well. And since she signed up for speaking, I will read her comments. LRSD Board, "My son is in first grade at Dunn Roberts, and I'm respectfully asking that you consider lifting the mask mandate for young kids while they are in single classrooms. I understand the need for kids, if they are switching classes or in the hall or common areas. However, I think it's time to reconsider making our young kids wear them all day. My first grader is at a point in his education where articulation matters, and it's impossible to see the mouth movements when learning phonics if his teacher has to wear a mask. The students are already confined to one room throughout the day. Please consider allowing our students to live and learn freely. Also, I strongly encourage the district to move towards a Virtual Academy next year for any parent not wanting their child to attend school in person. Our teachers cannot handle the workload of teaching both in-person and virtual, and our kids' education cannot suffer any longer." And that concludes all of the public comments President Hatter.
Thank you, Dr. Owong, for that. Getting into the first item, which is the district mask mandate, Dr. Owong, do you want to go ahead and read that, and then we can go into discussion afterwards?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Hatter. Board of Directors, quickly, of course, many of you are aware that the Arkansas Department of Ed sent out communication via Commissioner Memo about next steps as it relates to districts' Ready for Learning plans and, of course, the mask mandate. And so, I quickly want to share that with you. Of course, you can see there are strategies that they listed, and that includes wearing a mask. Also, according to the CDC, it recommends that, of course, the three-feet minimum distance in classroom setting when everyone is using the mask in that classroom or in that area. And in addition to that, individuals have to maintain six feet between adults or adults and students when masks cannot be worn, and then, of course, during activities that causes heavy breathing or any exhaling and so forth, inhaling. And then, of course, in common areas such as lobbies and auditoriums. In regards to the required mask-wearing, local districts, our school boards will decide to continue, modify, or eliminate through formal action what the mask policy mandate would be for that particular district. And then, of course, it tells you that masks can be taken into consideration when identifying close contacts. And there's a diagram that shows that if everyone is wearing a mask, then that determines the next steps for quarantine that may be mandated. And then, of course, once boards make approval or make a decision on the mask mandate, that becomes policy for those areas that are identified within that motion. Districts who have a mask mandate, if there's a confirmed positive, if both the confirmed and the exposed individuals were wearing a properly proper mask, then, and if, or if fully vaccinated and not exhibiting symptoms, or if fully recovered from COVID-19 and are within three months of original diagnosis, those will not have to quarantine. And so, as you can see, if everyone is wearing the mask, or if everyone is fully vaccinated and not exhibiting the symptoms, then that will determine if those individuals have to be quarantined or not. And this is a diagram that I mentioned a few seconds ago. And then, according to the American Rescue Plan Act, the district with board approval will have to revise their Ready for Learning plan for how to move forward with in-person learning, as well as continuity of services for the summer and the fall. And, of course, you will see that plan will be drafted by the Learning Ready for Learning Committee, submitted to Superintendent Corr for public comment, and then it will come to you all when public comment concludes for the final revision for the Ready for Learning plan for summer and fall. So, the district administration recommends that the LRSD Board continues with the district-wide mask mandate through July, so that we can actually see after the summer months, summer learning academies, where we are as a community with the vaccines, as well as with the virus itself. And so, that's the recommendation at this time. And so, I'll pause there for any questions.
Board, unmute and just begin speaking. The view I have, I can't see everyone, and I'll just direct the traffic. The comments or statements should be, comments and questions should be related to the mask mandate. Do we have any thoughts?
Yes, President Hatter, it's Ali Nolan. I just wanted to make a comment and say that up until the public comments tonight, I had not gotten any feedback asking us to remove the mask mandate, but I had gotten approximately 10 to 12 messages asking us to keep it in place. And so, I just wanted to share that with the board.
And are there any other questions, thoughts, or comments? Okay.
I have a question. I have a question for Mr. Corr. Mr. Corr, would the administration be opposed to consideration of an amendment to the mask policy that would allow removal of masks during reading instruction?
Well, I'll start with that, and then I can have Mr. Smith jump in, in particular, because leading the elementary schools. Some of the concerns that were brought up today, we actually have tackled that in a pretty progressive way. Not only do the staff have masks that are clear so that you can see, you know, the shape of mouths or mouth form- the, the shape of mouths or mouth forming on words, but even the students have those type of masks that are available. Mr. Smith, would you like to add on?
Thank you, Mr. Poor. And in addition to the, the masks, the clear shields, uh, we've also installed the speaker systems, which have also allowed, uh, for projection for teachers to communicate, uh, clearly, uh, during phonics lessons, uh, to support their instruction there as well.
So are teachers using clear masks during phonics instruction universally?
In classrooms I've observed, I've seen teachers using the face shields so that the students can see the formation of the words and letters with their mouths.
Okay.
Mr. Wood, in addition to that, uh, our special education department, uh, has also purchased, uh, the same, uh, mask and shields because of that, so that our students who are receiving special services would be able to, uh, see their teachers, uh, as they go through those, uh, act, uh, instructional exercises, excuse me.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Director. I have a question. Um, do we have any, any shields available for parents or students that can't afford the clear shields? Do we have any that, um, we could pass out or pass along to them?
Uh, I know that for students, um, our curriculum instruction, uh, team, uh, led by Mrs. Worsham, uh, that was part of the phase one of ESF funding to order additional, uh, shields and mask, clear, uh, mask and shields for our students moving forward. And so that's, but not, uh, we did not, uh, place that order for parents. Uh, it was only for teachers, uh, and students.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. O, uh, oh, is, are, are there any other, uh, board members with question thoughts?
One, one last point I'd like to make is what, um, when, when does our April, uh, when do our April assessments and our, our testing that's going on right now?
Let me see. We run through pretty much all of the month of April because of, uh, the extended time to make up, uh, but the exact date I can, uh, let me get that to you. I'll, I'll share that with you, the final date, the exact final date for test.
Well, I'll, I'll take your word, you know, late April, uh, and then are we experiencing, uh, significant more numbers of students in our buildings this month taking tests, um, than, than we've had the previous, the previous months of this school year?
We, um, let me make sure I understand your, uh, your question. Are, do we have more students in the building taking the exam?
That's right.
Um, to be honest, and I, I don't want to give you, uh, an inaccurate number. I can get that information for you. We do know we had, have a couple of schools who've seen a decrease in the number of students, uh, taking the assessments, but for the most part, the schools, all the schools have created plans to, uh, for the in-person students as well as the virtual students to take their assessments. And so that includes Fridays and afternoons. And so it's hard to tell, uh, because we're in the middle, in the midst of testing, uh, to have those final numbers. But that's, that is something that we can share with you all after assess, the testing window concludes.
I think also, Mr. Wood, that compliment, the question you've asked is also the fact that the numbers have increased in all three levels of in-person learning at the end of the third quarter. So we do have more students on campus as well. Uh, and then, of course, we have set up all sorts of opportunities for people to make up and do their assessments who are virtual learners. So, um, as Dr. always said, we can get those numbers for you, but we do have a lot more people on campus right now too, compared to where we were the last time we probably all talked about this as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Okay, um, are there any other, um, thoughts or questions or concerns from the board?
Ms. H, excuse me, Ms. Hatter, I would, uh, I'll be prepared to make a motion and to make a comment after my motion.
Okay, I have a few questions, a couple, uh, just one question. Uh, and this is actually, um, triggered by the, um, with our increase, um, students on, on campus. Will the, uh, buses and the lunchrooms, um, hallways be monitored more? Um, will the district or have the district give any thought to, um, uh, making sure that the building principals are, uh, passing down directives to monitor, um, children's, uh, interaction because they're going to be children and they're very touchy and, um, know how to minimize, uh, the spread?
Yes, uh, President Hatter, that's, uh, that's correct. Um, in their plans that they've worked with, uh, Mr. Smith and Mr. Rutherford, uh, as well as Dr. Cummings for testing, they put in those protocols on how they would, um, facilitate the testing environment, for the lack of better word. For example, in order to be able to spread, uh, all of the students who were taking the assessment, uh, some of the high schools had virtual days for, uh, 11th and 12th grade students, and then the ninth and 10th graders were on campus to take the assessment, and they spread them across the building, the school building so that, uh, they could monitor, uh, the social distancing, uh, between or among the students. So that was part of their assessment protocol plan that they developed.
Thank you, Dr. Owa, for, um, for letting, um, folks know about how the schools are doing their testing and assessments. Um, I may not have been clear on my question. I was asking as far, I, I, I was asking as far as the playground, the hallways, the lunchrooms, the common areas, um, making sure that our, our children are staying at a distance and not, um, that is what I'm speaking about. I'm talking about socializing and playing and doing what kids do, you know?
Right, and, and, and I, I understood you correctly. That, that's part of their plan. And so because they had an increase of students on campus, that was part of their plans to make sure that they monitored, uh, recess, they monitored the cafeteria, the halls, and so, uh, the students, I mean, well, the students were notified of the expectations, the, uh, students who returned back to campus, but the principals also, uh, made sure to reiterate the expectations for physical distancing, uh, throughout the, uh, school day in building.
Okay, great. And my last question, and this is just for the common good, um, just to hear the, uh, respe, response from the district. Um, when a person is out being tested for possible COVID, um, are they to remain off campus until the results come back in?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and there's, uh, and of course, that protocol is outlined in our district ready for learning, uh, plan, but, uh, they're also supposed to contact, immediately contact our point of contact, and that's the procedures that Nurse, uh, Bushmire and, uh, Mr. Self will walk them through, uh, with quarantines, uh, they expecta, expect, expected, expect, excuse me, uh, uh, mispronouncing the word, expected quarantine procedures.
Okay, great. And then you will, af, after all this is approved, you will, you guys will, uh, do the American Rescue Plan Act and have it posted right by the 15th, um, so our public can do a comment and do everything that we need to do with that, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. That's the point.
Okay. All right, so, um, given that there are, um, there, there's-
Ms. Hatter, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up question based on something you just asked? Um, so, Dr. Owa, it just caught my attention because Ms. Hatter asked a question about people, um, quarantining if they are tested and staying home until those test results come back. Um, I know that, I think the board recently discussed this, um, at one point, and the question that came up was about, is that a blanket policy or is it based on, you know, is it based on the circumstances that let that person to be tested? Um, you know, i, if a, if a teacher or a staff member just chooses to go get tested, do they automatically stay home or is that, um, based on the circumstances like their exposure that indicated that they needed to be tested? And I think it, I think it is important, Ms. Hatter asked that question, and I think it's very important for us to be clear, um, on what that policy is because it does have implications for the employees about whether they should come to work or not.
Right, and, and you're correct, but there's also the procedures that we continue to re, re, uh, recov, I mean, to cover with and to reiterate with the staff members about if you, if you're a close contact, then, uh, you're supposed to contact, well, the, our point of contacts, uh, Mr. Self and Nurse Bushmire will contact any close contact of any exposed or, uh, person who tested positive. Now, I will be clear that with the COVID leave that you all voted upon, I voted on, that if a person cannot self-quarantine without going through the district's, uh, established procedures, because if they do, then they are not qualified for the COVID leave per, uh, the policy that was put in place. And so if a person, uh, felt like they were a close contact, then they're supposed to immediately contact our POCs, and then they will, uh, do the investigation to determine if they need to quarantine or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, thank you, um, educational leaders for, uh, the conversation and questions. Director Adams.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and, and speak to my motion afterwards, but, uh, I would move that we adopt the administration's recommendation to continue the mask mandate through July.
Do we have a second to, uh, Ms., to Director Adams', uh, motion to adopt the, uh, recommended proposal by the district through July of 21?
Director Johnson seconded.
Director Johnson have seconded. All in favor?
If I might make-
Oh, you have, I'm so sorry.
I questioned.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I, I want to acknowledge the, the concerns of the, of the folks, and I'm, my experience has been, similar to Ms. Nolan's, that it's been a minority of people that, uh, have heard who wanted to discontinue the mask mandate. But I think it's a real concern for people that they would like to be done with it. It's tiresome, it's annoying, gets in the way of communication. I don't think there's any doubt about that, and I don't think anybody denies that. The question is, is the priority and what are we to do at, at this point? And it certainly, we are glad that there is, there are now vaccines that are available and that that has been made available to our, to our staff, although those are, uh, people can choose whether or not to do that. But I think that with the CDC guidance that we have, with the, with the risk that children, although they're, are not as likely to be infected and get seriously ill, it, it is still a risk. And the risk that people can, that children and, um, can still infect family members, and we don't know how many of our family members, moms, dads, grandparents, other people at home, you know, could still be at risk and a responsibility to the community at large. And with the, the difference of quarantine guidelines where we could keep kids in the school and teachers in the school, um, and in education, uh, better if we continue the mask mandate. I, I think that with balancing all those things out, that it's the most responsible thing to do at this point. Um, and I would hope, I think probably most of us would hope that maybe we could make a different plan for the fall, but there's no way to know, you know, what the conditions will be then, and we'll have to wrestle with that at that time. But, um, but it seems, at this point, we, we're just not far enough, we're still in the pandemic, we are not out of it. And, um, and I think it's the responsible thing to continue it.
Mr. Adams, I'm gonna jump on after, if you don't mind, and just share that one of the things that we as a district are doing also is continuing our effort to push, uh, and make everyone aware of shot clinics. Um, so, you know, we can, we push that out through PAM, obviously, uh, to our public, but we also have a survey out this week for what family members are saying about getting their 16 through 18-year-olds a shot, and then we hope to have a plan in place so that the first round of shots for our students can happen before the end of the April so that we can get the second shot in before they leave in May. So we're trying to be very proactive to enhance, quote, that herd mentality, but to Mr. Adams' point of, you know, where do we get safe? Remember, that's supposed to be at about 80% of, uh, to get to a herd mentality of, of folks that have the vaccine, and we are a long ways away from that, uh, as a community.
Madam President, I'd like to speak to the motion, if that's okay? Okay. Um, I, I support the motion and I plan to vote in favor of it as well. I, I believe that, uh, things are going relatively well in our schools as it relates to the, the cases that we're seeing, uh, right now. Uh, but I, I don't believe that the, the risk of disrupting the end of our school year and disrupting the assessments that are going on right now in April, uh, are, are worth the, uh, the, the convenience that would come with removing the masks as, as much as my kids would like to have them gone and as much as I'm ready for them to be gone. Truthfully, you can't go anywhere in the community without still having to wear your mask, even in light of, uh, the governor's, uh, recent, uh, policy change. And so I, I don't see how wearing them at, at, at school is that much different than wearing them anywhere else that, uh, that we go, um, in the community. I would also say this though, that when it comes to the summer's question, um, I'm, I'm starting out as, as a hard no on continuing the mask mandate, absent significant evidence to, uh, convince me to the contrary. But I think that we should finish this year, uh, with the way we're going and finish strong and then, uh, and be prepared to, to start strong in August.
Hey, closing out discussion. So, um, Director Adams made a motion to, just to recap for everybody, Director Adams made a, a motion to, um, to accept the district's recommendation to continue our mask, uh, mandate on masks through July of 2021. Director Johnson seconded. We went into discussion and now we're at the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. It passed unanimously, unanimously. And, um, and so, uh, there you go. It is a favorable vote, um, for our district continuing with our mask mandate. Thank you guys for that. Up next, we have, um, it's still an action item. It is our digital learning, um, academy, and Dr. Owa will present, and then we'll go into discussion.
Thank you, President Hatter. Uh, Board of Directors, uh, last month, uh, the team, the committee, uh, presented you the tentative plans, uh, of our K-12 Digital Learning Academy. Um, and so we wanted to, uh, present it to you as an action item so that we can meet the first, May 1st deadline for, for our Digital Learning Academy application that has to be submitted to Arkansas Department of Ed, as well as any staffing changes, uh, would need to be made, uh, prior to May 1st as well. Uh, we did, uh, start the committees, uh, led by, uh, Mrs. Karen Heatherly, as well as Mrs. Stephanie Franklin, have started a, uh, frequently asked questions document, and that will be ongoing. Um, but we wanted to make sure that, uh, you realize that this plan, uh, was not done in isolation. Uh, both committees, the K-6 as well as the 712 Committee, had, um, school levels, uh, at all schools, their guiding coalition teams that includes teachers, but they've also had parents and community members to participate in providing feedback prior to, uh, presenting this to you, uh, last month. And so we have had community input as well as personnel, our staff member, team members' input, and we'll continue to do that, uh, past this point. Uh, we also want to make sure we reiterate that all of our teachers, all of our instruction will be taught by Little Rock School District teachers who are certified, uh, for that content area, and that, uh, we will, uh, those teachers will deliver and design those lessons, the instruction. Now, we will have different tools, uh, that they could utilize, uh, such as an approved- such as an approved digital curriculum, but it will be delivered on our learning management system that all of our students and teachers have been utilizing this year, which is Schoology. But they will be teacher-created lessons that will be delivered both for the synchronous and asynchronous learning environment. But I will want to be, make sure that we're transparent that depending on the credit recovery needs for our secondary students, they will continue to utilize the approved digital delivery tool that the schools utilize for credit recovery. And we also want to make sure that we reiterate the options for students, not just our current students, because that's important to make sure we have a virtual learning environment, digital learning environment for students who we currently serve, but also students outside the district. We know that sometimes parents and students choose homeschool, the homeschool choice because of the academic flexibility and the parent and student input that they will have in court, as well as the family environment and flexibility of the learning space. And we want to show our community who have not yet chosen Little Rock that they have these options inside the Little Rock School District. And so we will continue to provide the efficient learning, the meaningful learning, at the comfort of any learning environment that that parent and student choose. But the advantage for students who are not currently our students, but also our current students, is that those students will be able to graduate with the Little Rock School District diploma because at this point, the students are still tied to their homeschools. And so they will still graduate with that school's diploma, as well as they have the option to participate in the district's extracurricular activities, as well as any support services that they may need. And so those are the advantages for new students, as well as our current students. We want to continue to provide flexibility. And it's just not because of the pandemic, pandemic, but we know that one thing that COVID-19 has shown us that we need to provide a variety of learning environments because our students have a variety of learning styles. And we have instructional staff who are already trained and are eager to be trained more in the virtual learning environment, digital learning environment. And so we want to make sure that we provide an additional learning environment for our students to excel, but also our staff, our personnel staff, to showcase their expertise and enhance their capacity by providing personalized learning, self-paced courses that are geared toward college and career, and the opportunity for students to have flexibility in case they want to do internships or on-the-job training. They can also have flexibility with their school day by choosing the digital learning environment. So the district is recommending that you all, our board of directors, approve the implementation of the Digital Learning Academy for our K-12 students, starting FY '22 for the new school year. President Hatter?
Okay, we will open it up for board questions.
Have some, but I hate to always go first. Does anybody else want to jump in and?
No, if that's how it went, that's, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, one question you just answered, but I want to make sure that we're very clear on it. The teachers for this would be teaching in areas for which they have certain, content areas for which they have certification, there wouldn't be outside.
That's correct.
Okay. There was some discussion about use of synchronous and asynchronous. I've even seen it discussed in the media about whether or not these are good terms to use. I wanted to address that really quickly. One, I agree that it's the words that the vast majority of people do not have a familiarity with, and it can be difficult, it makes it less approachable to understand this topic. There are also words that are, I have found, the accepted standard language when we're dealing with virtual education. And help me, just so that everybody who's watching understands, make sure that I am correct. Synchronous is when it's live education, it is happening at the same time. The teacher is teaching and the children are learning at the same time, so like a Zoom.
Like this, like this, right, this right here, yes, ma'am.
But asynchronous is something where they upload the content so the, you know, the assignments, the videos, the reading assignments, all those sorts of things, and the child can progress at their own pace. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's like the fact that we're recording this session right here, and so we will post this session to Schoology, and then the students will then be able to log in at night to review the video, as well as the assignments, and complete the assignments and submit it. And then that's the asynchronous.
So my question, because I'm gonna use those words, and I just want to make sure that I had a good understanding of what they were, and we were all on the same page. There was some discussion at the last meeting about, you know, these are Little Rock teachers, they are gonna create the content, they are gonna provide it. But for some of the asynchronous instruction, where the students are progressing at their own pace, there would be content available that is content that we get from other sources. Is that correct, and that I have a follow-up?
Yes, that's definitely correct. But it's a bank of tools that the teachers would be able to utilize. So it wouldn't be like what most experienced last spring. Even if the digital curriculum was at Mentum, our teachers would dictate what parts to pull in from at Mentum, because it has some great parts, but it by itself is not feasible for our kids. And so our Little Rock School District teachers would be able to, because they're still responsible, even if the student chooses asynchronous, they're still gonna be tied to a teacher, and that teacher is still the teacher of record for that student and has the responsibility of providing a sound educational experience. But they would probably utilize more tools for the asynchronous students than they would with the synchronous students because they are actually engaging in real time with the students who chose the synchronous format.
Okay, so that actually leads right into the follow-up question I have, which is that are these two separate tracks that families are gonna have to choose synchronous versus asynchronous? Or is there, you know, I will just say my experience this year as a parent of a virtual student has been it was a mix. We had daily Zooms, but we also had asynchronous material that my child could move through on their own. And so I'm a little confused about, are we having two totally separate tracks? And one is all synchronous learning, and one is all asynchronous? Or is it a mix of both?
Yes, so it could possibly, more so the synchronous students could have a mix of additional assignments outside of that actual classroom experience. So it could be like most of our students are experiencing now. But the asynchronous would have, they would have to opt into that because our teachers would have to know, and our administrators would have to know, how to configure their attendance. And so we have to have a set schedule for those students. And so, yes, they would have to opt into the synchronous or asynchronous so that we would know how to deliver their instruction, and of course, for accountability purposes.
You keep leading right into the, so the third, I had it down as my third question, but I don't know how many I've gotten so far. The next question, or the last question I have here, is how will these students, their test scores, their attendance, their grades, be counted or credited since they are enrolled in their homeschool? Will those grades, you know, my concern is that I don't want a student who is struggling with this virtual academy. I mean, I don't want our students to be struggling, and we need to address that immediately, no matter what. But I am concerned about holding, for example, their homeschool accountable if that school doesn't actually have much ability to change what's happening in terms of their virtual education.
I would tell you that there will be definitely an open communication between the virtual teachers and administrators with the students' homeschool. We've discussed that, the committees have discussed that. But those students are still tied to their homeschool because the virtual, the Digital Learning Academy will not have an LEA. And so assessments, grades, everything will go back to their homeschool. But there will be ongoing communication and updates between the Digital Learning Academy and the homeschool environment. But we wanted to make sure that students have the ability to participate in extracurricular activities, as well as any activity that's AAA sanctioned. And to do that, they would have to be tied back to their homeschool.
Okay, I'm gonna request that we keep records. If this is approved, if we move forward with the virtual academy, so that down the road, if there are questions about whether or not the scores and the attendance and things like that have had any detrimental effect on the homeschool, things like, I want to make sure that we have the ability to have that information, that data. So I'm gonna ask that we somehow collect that in a way that we can review how it is impacting the homeschool.
And Director Nolan, I believe Ms. Heatherly was one of the administrators that mentioned. That's part of the Digital Learning Academy plan is to keep ongoing data on how our students are performing in the virtual. And they will do it more often because that will determine if the student, if the teachers and the principals will have to have a conference with the student and the parents about a change in instructional environment, if they need to go back to the in-person learning environment. So that's going to happen throughout the school year. And so that would be individual monitoring that would take place. So we would have that data, so, yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I had a question. Dr. Owa, there is another presentation, you talked about a commitment, a required commitment. What, that required commitment, what is that? Is it 12 months, six months?
We are asking so that we can streamline staff and be able to really track our students, not track our students, but be able to provide the most ideal instruction environment that parents and students commit to at least a year. One of the proposals for elementary says semester, but even with that, in order for us to really effectively streamline teaching staff and staff schools effectively based on the students who will be in person versus the students who will be in the digital learning environment, we really need our parents to commit to a year, unless there's an extenuating circumstance. And that's what the plan talked about. If there's an extenuating circumstance, such as change in the home environment, students are not doing well academically, then we would take that into account to make sure we make the very best decision for our young person. And so, but we're asking for at least a year commitment so that we could, we won't be overstaffed, either virtually or in the onsite.
So will you have, will there be counselors for the online versus the in-school?
Yes, sir, that's the plan. So that, and those counselors would receive, just like the teachers in the Digital Learning Academy, professional development that's geared toward how to support students who are in the digital or virtual learning environment. And so, yes, we will have those support services there.
So let me, if I'm doing virtual all the way up until my senior year, and I say, I want to go to, I want to go into the school my senior year, will there be an opportunity for a seat or a person to do that, a student to do that?
Yes, sir, unless you all change plans the next couple of years. As it stands now, based on these plans, the students will have that opportunity to return back to their homeschool the next year.
Okay.
At any time that next year, or the year after.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes, Director?
Could I ask one question? And if I missed it in your presentation, I apologize, Dr. Owa. Do we have a thumb on, as of right now, what our enrollment might be next year? As, you know, have we gauged interest as of now? And then do we have a projection of, if this is approved, what it could go up to?
To be honest, Mr. Wood, no, it's just more so qualitative instead of quantitative because we did not want this enrollment process would take place after a favorable approval from you all, favorable decision from you all. And so we have not started any process that would give us some tangible numbers at this point. We, like I said, just qualitative, of parents asking if we would offer it for next year, parents responding, saying that they hope we do, such as some of the community or public comments that I shared with you all tonight.
Fair enough.
Okay, hearing is seen, there aren't any other comments. I do have a few questions. I know we have spoken about the various stakeholders that were involved in how were administrators and lead teachers involved in creating this plan? Can you, one, share very briefly about how how principals and teachers were involved? And then what schools, and then if you know, whether it's geographical area of the city or actual school names?
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen. As you can see, the elementary digital, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, I can, I don't know by rales.
Elementary Digital Learning Academy, this is just one of their meeting minutes where you can see the focus group attendees, the parent and guardian participants. You will see we have representatives from Booker, Carver, Fulbright, Chico, Gibbs, Pulaski Heights, Stevens, Terry, and exactly what took place during that meeting, as well as questions about students and their participation. We've also, the elementary principals and that actual committee sent out links for each school to provide input. And so as you will see, if I clicked on Bell, since that's number one, you will see that their teams at that level were able to provide feedback to the district committee that encompass our school, school leaders, school educators. And so their input was also incorporated into the report that you all received last week, I mean, last month. There's another meeting minutes that will show you who all were involved. And then I believe there was a, right here. So the, for the secondary, you will see the high schools who received the opportunity, or who had the opportunities to provide feedback, their team members, teachers, staff members, and then same with Hall, and the feedback that were given from their teams at each level. So we, I hope that answered your question about who were the individuals who were able to provide input because at both the elementary and secondary level, they were all, it was more than just an administrator or a group of administrators who provided input and feedback on the development of the plans that were presented to you last month.
Okay, and then as far as the parent meetings, how did, how did parents find out about these meetings? Was the message sent out to all virtual parents? Or was it by invite only, or school-wide, city, district-wide? How did that happen?
Well, the, each group had their own process of getting parent feedback. They used social media to get parent input. They also utilized surveys. And then they also asked the individual schools, I know secondary did this, asked individual schools to get feedback from their parents and students to provide that in their overall report. And so it was via survey, via social media. Let me, I have my notes, I'm trying to make sure I Um let me, I have my notes. I'm trying to make sure I covered all the areas. Team, I know uh Hope, Darren and Randy are on here. If I uh forgotten uh any other part, if you can chime in, that would be great. Yes, uh each on secondary, um the uh request was for every principal by February fifteenth uh to provide names and contact information for at least two parents by the end of the day, February nineteenth. And so they had parents um who would provide, who actually served on focus groups. And other parents who attended the meeting, uh grade levels represented, now this is on secondary. Six of the parents represented uh represented grades seven and eight. Seven of the parents represented grades nine and twelve. And then six of the eight uh parents were African-American, two of the eight were Caucasian. And uh so those were some of the uh stats or demographics that we uh had uh for them. And then, of course, like I said, elementary uh utilized social media, Facebook, um a group to obtain feedback as well.
Okay, and um great. And then I'm, this is just the for the public and going back to another um reference. Uh there there will, from what the overview says, there 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 will be um weekly uh monitoring from what it says in in the overview. And then if students drop below seventy percent, uh they will be required to participate in some type of um in in intervention. Um I think Director Wood or Mason asked about um the agreement, and then that will come. Um and then and and then when, when will the agreement or or else the requirements come?
The uh expectation is
The expectations, mhm.
Once um if it's approved, uh when uh if and when it's approved, then based on the plan that we've presented to you, the uh contract, the expectations will be uh listed. And that will be part of the student enrollment process. And so as the students opt and parents opt in into the digital learning academy, they would have to sign the expectations and to know that if the students are not performing academically, then a meeting will be held for a discussion on uh the best instructional environment uh for uh that particular young person.
Okay, and then we also talked a little bit about uh what we talked um a bit about digital equity and making sure that um whether, you know, because there's a requirement for cameras being on and making sure that students have the um devices and um being able to have access to be able to um participate. And then uh will that be a ongoing um assessment for those um uh children that are um uh participating in learning virtually? Like as far as making sure they they are getting um have access to be able to participate um right if wherever they're at, they are not, you know, make making making sure there's um continual equity um and within the digital environment.
Yes, ma'am. That's that's part of the plan because we want to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity, if they so choose, to participate in the digital learning academy. So we will provide the hotspots, we provide, of course, the uh the Chromebook. Uh if anything that uh comes up, and that's that's part of the training that our counselors, our teachers, our administrators will go through of signs to look for if students are not engaged in that uh particular uh learning environment uh that would be the digital learning environment. And so we, they would do monthly, not monthly, uh uh continue with uh continual checks on the students and their progress. And in fact, uh one of the plans, I believe, the secondary, both plans said that they would uh have, uh the counselors would do monthly checks uh in check-ins with the students uh just to see how they're progressing um and not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my line of questioning for you all on uh surrounding that. Are there, I I did do a a quick scan.
Ms. Hatter, can I make?
Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you. And and I just want to um share with our public that our our board members also have been on tours where they've gotten to hear uh staff members share their frustration sometimes of being having to deliver both virtual and in-person learning at the same time. So our our, you as a board, you know, are well-prepared, I think, tonight to either determine to move forward or not. And I want the public to understand how you've invested, not only what's happening in the board meetings, but actually through these tours of getting to talk to individuals about it. So appreciate that. And then the last thing I will share as a pitch is just, in my mind, this really allows us to cater and and utilize the strengths, not only the strengths of what a learner comes into the game with in terms of them being a virtual learner or an in-person learner, but also for those that are our educators of being able to utilize their strengths. Because some truly are really gifted at at being uh delivering uh the virtual aspect of education. So we're we're kind of setting ourselves up, I think, to utilize our strengths in a in a very unique way that I think is going to be very attractive to our public. Thank you, Ms. Hatter.
Thank you. Um so um this is closing out our um board uh discussion.
I'm sorry, uh Director Hatter, um i- if it's all right, uh Mr. Poor, for the benefit of the public, I I want to make sure, can you speak very briefly? Is this financially a good move for the district? It is my understanding that this will help us um with our goal of having a a balanced budget. And I just want to have you address that.
Yeah, absolutely. And and in kind of a couple of different ways. We think that one thing that is possible of this is that as we share the option that it might attract students um or let us partner with families who maybe currently aren't accessing um, you know, Little Rock School District, and it would allow them that access into our system and into uh some of our clubs and activities as well. So that's positive. Uh on the other side, we believe that we will be able to utilize uh some of our S R funding that we have received from the federal level to assist with our staffing with this model. Because they then help develop the virtual platforms uh that can be used that are are necessary even for you know, some of our in-person, they're going to enrich our curriculum for virtual learning. And so that ends up um becoming, you know, a a help with us for our staff. Uh because you probably all know, we're trying to tighten staffing uh in the district, but there are going to need to be educators that get assigned to virtual learning. And we think those educators for virtual learning will be able to be paid uh initially from S R funding.
And I think that that is one of the attractive things about this is that we're able to uh try out or utilize this platform or introduce it to the district and not allow allow it to come out of uh general uh funds. So that's one good thing about using S R funds. Um I'm I'm scanning the top of my screen, making sure. Are you guys ready? We're ready. Do we, can we get a motion? Are we ready to have a motion on um the proposed recommendation from the district? And do we have a director to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I'll I'll move that we adopt the administration's uh proposal to move forward with a digital learning academy next year.
Hey, Director Wood has just made a motion to adopt the district's proposal on the virtual learning academy for next year. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Director Mason have seconded the motion. Do we have any um thoughts or statements or um last-minute comments or questions?
I I would just comment, uh President Hatter, I think if we're going to be a an uh twenty-first century school district, I think this is a piece of what we need to do.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Um I would like to know, uh will this cause anyone to lose their job? The virtual academy?
No, ma'am, I'll actually, I'll take that on and and actually, we actually think this is going to help us with some of our displaced teachers. Remember, we are not terminating or reducing any force this year. We are uh tightening our staffing through attrition. And this will give an option for staff members of a place for them to find a home.
Okay, you know, in the past, okay, there was a such thing as uh well, of course, this is no longer exists because we've gone from a hundred pages to ten. Um if uh you're not going by seniority or anything like that as far as uh uh placing uh teachers and jobs. And one of, and one, another question I had from a constituent was uh what about, are you going to be pushing older teachers out? Now, I was asked that truly.
Sure. And again, I'll I'll start with the second question is that we are not pushing anyone out. We have had staff members uh during the course of the year, over a hundred staff members who have resigned or retired during the year. And currently, we're approximately ballpark around fifty staff members who have turned in letter of intent not to return. So, you know, with all those things in place, we um we do not have to do any type of reduction in force. Uh and that is not in our plan. So no one is being pushed out. And and for older teachers, there are older teachers that have been really skilled at at virtual delivery. And uh they have the option to say that they want to take this on. And we have young ones that would rather be in-person. So it's really an option of the staff, the jobs will be posted, and anyone can apply. There is no age discrimination of any sort. Uh and we feel like we'll have a a, as typical in Little Rock, a very blended staff uh that will be taking part in in delivering this instruction.
Superintendent Poor, I if I could just briefly uh chime in with that. Uh Director Callaway, Mrs. Callaway, um yes, we have some phenomenal teachers who have been teaching twenty, twenty-five, thirty-plus years who are doing exceptional job uh jobs with teaching uh virtually. And so our goal is to make sure, though, we get those teachers who love doing it and who are great at doing it to apply for these positions. Um and so it's it's open to everyone who would like to apply. Um and uh who's, and and so I just wanted to make sure that I stress that uh we've witnessed innovative in- instruction from all of our age groups throughout the district.
Um I'm, so I just wanted to, this was, if I understand correctly, we're just get I I want to be able to make a comment about, um I am voting for this, and I want to say publicly why. Um I think one thing that hasn't really been mentioned a lot is that we are losing students uh to a virtual charter school and to homeschooling. We can now provide that service, we can provide that um within the district, people can have the option of supporting their local school district and receive that content virtually and without having to go elsewhere. Um this will also be, as it was said, good for our teachers, so they will not have to do both. Um good for parents who next year want to have a virtual option um and financially good for the district. And so ultimately, I think it is a good plan. I know that there are concerns about how it continues to develop um down the road. And I would just say that when we, you know, for example, open a new school or some, you know, Southwest High School, it's not hands-off after that. The board and the district and the P P C, who is making, you know, helping have input on policies, continue to have input, and and that will be the same for this. This is not something that once we approve it, it is something that we walk away from. Uh and so I just wanted to to make that point as well. Uh but I do think it is a good plan for our teachers, for the district as a whole, and to be able to provide something to students um through the district that they are currently going elsewhere to get.
Madam President, could I speak in favor of the motion?
Go ahead.
Um it, I I would echo the comments of uh Director Adams and Director Nolan, both make great points about this. This allows, this positions us to be more competitive in an environment when we are competing for every single student. And um we we can't afford to lose even one percent of our students because we didn't offer a virtual option for them next year. So I I look forward to this being a successful model. Uh in in the next few years, I hope that it is uh something that uh that may put the virtual academy out of business. I believe that the traditional public schools have an opportunity, they have a natural opportunity to put charter schools out of business when when things are equal academically between them. Because this gives students in our city an opportunity to be part of a virtual environment, but still be connected to a traditional public school when it comes to athletics and extracurricular activities. And I think that 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 has an opportunity to create a lot of pride among among those students that are that are virtual learners. I will say this, and I'll I'll challenge Mr. Poor and and his team on this, that this has to be excellent. This this can't just be okay. We we have to continue to push the envelope and getting good at this. Um last uh last semester, or I'm sorry, not last semester, last spring was a challenging spring. We learned a lot from that over the over the summer, and we implemented a much better plan in the fall. And this academic year has has been better than last last spring was. This year has had challenges, though, and I I hope that we will continue to learn from those challenges. And that as we dive face-first into this virtual academy and embrace it as part of uh a a a a more permanent part of the Lorax School District, I hope that it will continue to improve and continue to improve and 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 deliver a great educational opportunity for for our students.
Um Director Mourning here, I just want to see if you could speak on what subjects will be available for virtual learning? Will it be all subjects or what?
I I don't want to say uh Mrs. uh Mrs. Mourning all, uh because it depends on um the needs. But we definitely want to um offer the thirty-eight that's that's required. Uh now, some uh hesitation uh about the A P classes, depending on what what needs to be offered, uh will be uh will be offered. But we want to make sure we offer uh definitely the thirty-eight because our students need those to to be able to graduate and complete uh high school um and and move on uh from there to be eligible to graduate. But we also want to make sure we offer as many as possible. But to keep in mind, one of the reasons, one of the advantages for our students to be tied to the uh to their homeschool is that any extracurricular activities like band, uh choir, they'll be able to uh participate in those large group uh activities as well. But our goal is to offer uh the content areas and hopefully some uh specialty areas as well.
Okay, well, and just to be clear, you said you're not sure if we'll offer A P classes?
No, not all. I, we will offer A P classes, not all the whole gamut of A P classes. And that's where uh the example of utilizing the additional tools uh of resources, for example, uh some of the virtual academy courses like we've done this year. If we had a smaller number of, and well, and not just this year, previous years. If we've had a small number of students uh who would like to take a course, then having one course from virtual academy provides that opportunity uh to uh to provide that offer, that course for our students. And Hope Worsham, uh Ms. Worsham, did you want to add to that?
I was just going to add, and in the event that there's um a student who really wants to take, like, for example, one A P course, um it may be that we partner with the homeschool, that that student then attends that one course on campus, or we find a way for that student to attend that course virtually um pending if the teacher, you know, agrees to that, and we can work that out. So there there may be some extenuating circumstances like that where we do utilize um some creative options for students so that they can get those courses.
Ms. Worsham, uh Director Callaway speaking, uh what about elective subjects? Will they be offered?
Yes, ma'am, they will have uh access to a set of elective courses. So for example, there will be C T U courses that students will have access to. And um some of those, again, will be offered um via, will utilize Arkansas Virtual, which is um the the Arkansas Provided Virtual Academy that we can utilize for some of our courses. Um and then some of those will be taught by Little Rock School District teachers. So it will just depend on the course and the availability of instructors. the availability of instructors there.
And I did have a couple more questions. So, with the uncertainty of what courses will be offered, like, what date would you all have that in mind, and would the public be able to receive that list?
Yes, so we do, yeah, we do plan to, pending the approval tonight, put out a list of what would be available course options at the Virtual School, particularly for secondary. Yep.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying, in regards to the AP classes that you're unsure about, if you'll offer, like, when would that be determined? Would it just happen?
Right. So, students have already made, filled out their course selection sheets. So, based on their course selection sheets, we would try as best possible to match that up. In the event that it can't be matched up, then it would just be a conversation with the student about what their options are in taking classes.
Can I make a statement, too? I think we got off track a little bit here in the fact that if a student signs up for an AP course, we're gonna find a way to deliver the AP course. It just may mean a different delivery than having a Little Rock teacher do it, because the teachers are driven by an overall capacity within a classroom. So, we have to sometimes be creative of where we find the solution for them to take a class that might be an elective or an AP course. But we're gonna get their schedules complete, because that's gonna create the customer satisfaction that we all want.
Okay. And one more question. Is it possible that after the list is distributed, that more courses could be added during the year?
Typically, when students make their course selections, it's, you're choosing the course for a year or for a semester. So, I don't foresee there being a massive change in the offerings, but it could be, there are some options for students, too, if they want to accelerate, just like in our regular schools now. There's options for them to take courses, maybe via BYU or other avenues throughout the year, on top of the coursework they're taking in school.
Now, and Ms. Mourning, there is an option for year-to-year course selection to change. But because of personnel placement, as well as student offerings, when they lock in their schedule during the year, that's less likely to happen. But from year-to-year, the course selection could develop to add more AP courses or any type of courses, based on the student needs and wants.
Ms. Worsham, does the public have a, will the public be able to know what courses, they just need to go to their regular high school or whatever school, to find out what courses are going to be offered?
Right.
Can the public get that information there?
Yeah, so the stu-, yeah, exactly. The students have, right now, are in the middle of course selection, and so, those, the course offerings that are out and available now is where anyone should look right now.
Ms. Callaway, that was really a great question, because I just text Dr. Owa to say that. So, is that, you know, the reality is that these kids have already picked their courses, and they all got to have the same course selection that every other secondary student did. So, every course was open to them, and then now, we have to see which students really want to access this Virtual Academy, and then we got to go cater to meeting their needs through staffing or through using other programs. Thank you for that question.
Which is why we need to move forward on a vote to where it could be an option to choose to come into the Virtual Academy, and what if the board decides to approve the district's recommendation to implement the Digital Learning Academy. So, yeah, so all of our secondary children are selecting their courses right now. Some of them have already started, and then, and then we will, and then the district will pair them up. Well, so, let me make sure that I see Director Callaway is still unmuted. We are.
I'm done. I'm done.
Okay. Okay. So, and then, of course, we will, sorry, one of the things I do want to make sure I always add is, because of this being a digital platform, making sure that equity is digital equity, not digital equality, but also digital equity is a part of moving forward, and then a part of the ongoing assessment of it all. So, what have happened since the motion was made?
And what second?
I'm trying to recall who made the motion, just for the record, so Michael could capture it.
I made the motion.
Director Wood, was that you who made the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And I second, and I second.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, Director Wood may have made the motion to accept and move forward with the district's recommendation of the, to implement our learning, the Digital Learning Academy for our K-12 students. That was seconded by Director Mason. We went into discussion, and now we're at the vote. So, all in favor?
Madam President, Director Wood didn't use the term K-12.
You are absolutely correct. He made the motion to accept the recommendation of the Digital Learning Academy. The actual recommendation does say K-12, but he did not use that. So, yes. And Director Mason, seconded. We had discussion, and now we're at the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, it looks like that passes unanimously. I'm trying to get that correct. And so, moving forward. Okay. All right. So, moving forward on our agenda, the third item is the district report. This report is, will be on salaries, compensation, and it will be a review. It's not an action item, and then we'll go into the PLCs. Mr. Robert Robinson will present to us, and then we'll go into any questions or discussion about what we hear from Mr. Robinson on the salary compensation. So, if everyone could mute your mics until the end of his presentation, then we'll come back and have a discussion. Superintendent will introduce or carry us into the presentation on salaries.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hatter. And board members, we know that many of you talked about this as you worked to, you know, get elected, and shared that this would be one of the things that you really wanted to see happen within the district, was compensation packages for our employees. We know that we also have to kind of continue to build your base knowledge on, you know, where we're at within these processes to impact both certified and classified staff, as well as some of our administrative staff. We've tried to be very comprehensive in terms of our approach, of really working collaboratively on both ends. And one of the things that we know, we'll go and go to the next slide, is that, you know, the, what we've got to do in order to do this is, we've got to, when you talk about giving a salary increase, especially in a time when you have some declined enrollment, that you've got to be able to be really good stewards with all of your resources. So, I want to share upfront with all of you is that, you know, I don't see you actually making a vote on this, probably until after we approve the budget in September. That could come in September. You'll see and hear us talk that that's really when we want to have this all framed up for you, but then you have your choice to do that in September, October, November. When we do come forward with a recommendation for salary, we can always make it retro, back to the start of the year. But we're excited because we're at a place where we think we're going to be able to execute all this and do the right things to make it happen. For some employees, it's been, you know, over 20 years since they've had some sort of change in their compensation. For our teachers, they did get an increase, most recently because of action by our governor and our legislative body that moved us forward with moving our minimum pay up to $36,000. Interestingly enough, there were some districts that still haven't executed the funds that were provided by the governor to move forward, and that's because they weren't financially sound enough to be able to take that on. So, you know, there is, because it was just a gift to get us through that first year, but then you have to be ready to be committed to the salary on down the line. So, remember, whatever we make in terms of adjustments, it's a gift that keeps on giving, especially when it's a percent increase. And for employees, a percent increase is gold, because that is something that continues to enhance over their career, and you probably have that within your own professional lives as well. So, as we look at this, we know that, you know, our teachers have, really, really, basically, all of the educators within Little Rock School District, we feel like it's time to try to come forward with a system. But at the same time, we're doing things to work with everyone to, you know, be really smart about our budget reductions. You're going to continue to hear more about that from Mr. Bailey and myself this month, next month, and all the way up through September, to justify that we have accomplished the goals. We want to make sure that all employees are getting this increase, and we want to make sure that what we come up with is really easy to understand, not only for our public, but also for people that are looking at us to possibly choose the Little Rock School District to be the place where they're employed. If you go to the next slide, our teacher compensation plan that we've been working on, this has not been done in isolation. It has been done with members of the PPC. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Robinson and Mr. Bailey, our CFO, for their work on this. This actually, some of this plan and work really began even more than almost three years ago with our Teacher Association. Now, continues with the PPC. You can see here that what we've done is, we're trying to say we're going to be competitive, and what we ultimately would like to do is that we'd like to get our salary up into that $48,000 range, and try to do that within the next two years, two school years. So, that's a lofty target, but we think we can get there if we stay diligent, and we're gonna have to work with all of you to do that. That will include some rightsizing and possibly some difficult decisions. But as shared in the previous presentation on the point that Ms. Callaway brought up, we are not doing any type of thing where we're telling somebody, you're terminated, you're fired right now, but we're trying to take advantage of employees that have left us kind of through a natural process of retirements, or that they've left to go take different jobs, that we've got to be disciplined then to tighten our staffing. And really appreciate the efforts then of Dr. Owa, Mr. Rutherford, and Mr. Smith, because they've been working on trying to create those plans of what is the appropriate size, and we're working to be ready to execute that. We've even put on a semi-hiring freeze right now to make sure that we are set to go, and really honor internal candidates to hire and fill positions as we need them, as jobs come open. The other thing that you can see here is, we also know that stipends are another issue that haven't been touched. Approximately a year ago at this time, we increased our head coaching salaries for football, basketball, volleyball, and they had not been touched since 1985. Stipends for athletics have not been touched since 1985. So, we actually regressed as a district and weren't competitive. We will need to continue to do that. So, all these things are being set up to impact us. What we would love to do, when it gets right down to it, is that we'd like to hopefully come in this year with a sizable percent increase for teachers, and then we also know that we want to come in with a percent increase for our staff that are not educators. To that effect, approximately, again, a little more than a year ago, the district entered into a contract, an agreement with the MAG Group, as you can see, the Management Advisory Group, and their task was to really dive in, and you're gonna hear in detail Mr. Campbell's process of trying to understand a little bit more in depth of, you know, how, what's the best way to move forward on compensation for employees who aren't teachers. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Campbell right now. Actually, Mr. Robinson, did you want to introduce Mr. Campbell before we turn it to him?
Yes, please. Mr. Russell Campbell is Vice President for MAG, Management Advisory Group. The company has an excellent track record, working with school districts, employer to contracting with MAG. They became the families, and so, prior to making the offer, we did research, and the most recent district we talked to was Atlanta Public Schools, and I think MAG is currently working with the Houston ISD. So, they have an excellent track record, working with small and large school districts, as well as working with city government. This time, Mr. Russell Campbell.
Good evening, Madam President, other board members.
And Mr. Campbell, if I may say, if I may interrupt you. Dr. Owa, if you will go to Slide 8, you can scroll up to Slide 8. Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Campbell. Good evening, Madam President, other board members, Mr. Poor and staff. As Mr. Robinson said, I served as the director for this project that started about 12 and a half months ago. And what I want to do tonight is take you through our findings as to where the district currently stands with its current system, relative to some selected school districts that the district and MAG agreed to compare Little Rock to, as well as talk about some of the recommendations going forward. I will say that throughout this process, everyone that we came in contact with, on the staff end, from administration to support personnel, were very helpful and instrumental in getting this project moving forward. And so, we're gonna go ahead and go through some of the basics of compensation and talk some specifics that are unique to Little Rock. Next slide, please. The study, in terms of purpose and objectives, included approximately 1,800 positions, both full and part-time. These were the non-teaching positions, often referred to as the classified positions. In terms of different job titles, there are about 300 different job titles that encompass this group of employees. Our task was to not only look at the job duties and responsibilities within the district, to rank them, to ensure that there was internal equity among the jobs, but also to conduct a market review, to make sure that externally speaking, what we came back with was going to put the district in a competitive position to be able to compete and fill vacancies within the district. As a part of that process, we had the employees fill out a comprehensive online job questionnaire that asked them to document their duties, responsibilities, the requirements for their specific positions in terms of education experience, any unique certifications that they had to hold. The questionnaires were reviewed by their supervisors. Supervisors did not have the option to change any information that was submitted by the employee, but they could add commentary or additional information. We used that questionnaire to rank the jobs internally, and we also used that questionnaire to develop new comprehensive job descriptions for the school district, and to conduct a Fair Labor Standards Act review, to determine which positions should be considered exempt or non-exempt for the purposes of overtime pay. Next slide. When we looked out into the marketplace, we agreed to survey several districts. We contacted them, provided a list of what we call benchmark jobs. We do the job analysis on all 300 positions. We do the market survey on a sample, a representative sample. And so, the organizations or other districts that we looked at, the majority of them were in the state of Arkansas, but we looked at some similar districts that had some similar characteristics that were outside of the state of Arkansas. So, moving forward with that list, we started with Springdale School District, North Little Rock School District, Richmond Public Schools in Virginia, which is pretty much identical in terms of student population to the Little Rock School District. We also looked at Shelby County Schools, which is in Memphis, Tennessee, Conway Public Schools in Arkansas. We also looked at the city of Little Rock as an employer, because the city does have similar positions in areas like finance and HR and IT. So, you compete with the city for those type of skill sets. We also looked at the Polansky County Special School District, Atlanta Public Schools, and the- Atlanta Public Schools, and the Cato Paris School District in Louisiana. That last note there says OMEN Online Private Sector Data Source. For the public schools, we simply can file a four-year request for the information that we need, and they provide us with their salary schedules and pay information. Unfortunately, the private sector is not bound by those statutes or regulations. So we take a different approach to see what's being paid in the private sector for jobs like a computer technician, or HVAC heating and air con technician, or mechanic, or a secretary, those type of positions. And so we use the Federal Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor Statistics database that provides private sector wage and salary information for each region of the country, each state, and each region within the state, so that we can ensure that we have a good feel of what's being paid on the private market for those jobs that do exist within the district. And so we collected information from those organizations for those 50 benchmark positions. Imagine, if you will, we take the information from the job analysis, from that questionnaire, where we look to compare the duties and responsibilities of all the employees to our 14-point criteria, where we look at things like data that they work with, records, reports, charts, could be a budget document, could be a maintenance report, incident report. We look at education experience that is needed for the position, not necessarily what the employee holds. We look at any leadership or supervision, any asset or financial management, look at any unusual hazards or conditions the employees exposed to as they do their job. And we'll sign a complexity score that ranges from 1 to 10 in each one of those 14 categories. And that helps us build our hierarchical list of positions. We begin by identifying the most complex position, which is going to have the highest overall point value score. And then in descending order, we have the lower-level, lower-scoring positions within the organization. So that satisfies our internal relationship. And then externally, we take the average annual salary from the organization's pay tables for each one of those 50 benchmark positions. And then we use a modeling technique known as linear regression to create a new salary schedule, where the positions are assigned onto the salary schedule based on their duties and responsibilities. So this is much more than just a salary survey, where we're just looking to see what is being paid for other jobs. What drives this process is what the individuals are doing within your school district. Even though the titles may say administrative assistant or videographer, there will always be some nuances in terms of duties and qualifications as you look at different organizations. So we want to make sure that the employees get maximum credit based on the actual duties they're performing within your district. So if someone asks, "What's the ultimate driver of the value of a job as it relates to a study of this type?" There will be a greater emphasis put on the actual responsibilities that the employee has. The market data is viewed more as a reference point, because it comes with some unknowns. Number one, we don't know what mechanism they use to create their salary schedules. We don't know where they pull their data from necessarily to pull their salary schedules. We don't know when the last time they updated. And so it is a great reference point, but what ultimately drives it is providing credit for what the people are doing in the positions in the Little Rock District. Next slide, please. And so when we look at what you currently are paying for positions across the district and compare that to the market information, it does not paint a very rosy picture, to be quite frank. You'll notice the first number there says negative 21.1% average relation to market entry. These are entry-level salaries. These are for people you're going to hire in various positions whose experience just meets the minimum qualifications. They may have just come out of college. They may have somewhere between one and three years of experience and not very seasoned. You can typically expect to pay them around the entry level. Right now, your biggest problem is your entry-level salaries are not competitive at all. And that is borne out by some of the commentary when I spoke and met with employees. A number of employees pointed out that, particularly supervisor employees, that it is very difficult to get potential applicants to accept positions based on the current starting salaries, because they are low. The applicant pools themselves are not as robust as you'd like them to be, which does not allow for hiring the best and brightest to fill some of the vacant positions. You wind up having to take someone with a secondary skill set perhaps, and you're basically going to train them on the job. Sometimes that works out well, sometimes it does not. For middle and upper management, you generally want to pay for experience, and you're going to pay a premium for that. And so for the upper-level positions and technical positions, it has been extremely difficult for the district to fill those positions. Generally speaking, and I've been doing HR compensation analysis for over 18 years, any job is fillable within a 45-day timeframe. You've got basic maintenance and custodial positions that may take 60-plus days to fill, because you have difficulty finding either a qualified candidate or a qualified candidate who's willing to take the salary that's being offered. In some cases, out of necessity to fill the position, the department and HR have had to bring in new people from the outside at salaries above the entry level, which creates a whole set of other dynamic problems. When you bring in a new employee who's going to make a salary above someone who's been there for a few years, that new employee is coming in the door, leapfrogging over an existing employee. And that's going to create some morale issues for someone who's been there and done a good job for the past two, three, four years, and see someone come through the door making more, and then I've been there three or four years and I haven't gotten a pay raise. It really starts to create a difficult work environment. And certainly, I don't think I'm going out on a limb to say that the pay issues have had a negative impact on morale. When we look at the market averages, and this is where we're looking at what people in comparable positions who are fully qualified and competent, they're not training, they're seasoned, you're about 10.4% behind the market, so you're a little bit better shape there. And then on the top end of the market, you're 4.8% behind. So if you look at these numbers here, the biggest problem is starting rates of pay. So that was one of the major objectives that we set out to address as we built the new salary structural and system. Next slide, please. This here is just an example, maybe a little hard to read, but this is a review of the market data as we compile it. You'll see to the left, you'll see those benchmark titles, those 50 jobs that I talked about. Then moving to the right are the entry levels, the mid and the maxes of the districts that we looked at, including the city and the private sector data. And you'll see a comparison of duty days and annual hours. And then to the far right is the comparison of how you stack up. That's where those numbers that I just went over came from, this report as we compile that market data. Next slide, please. And move to the next one. This is what the actual raw information looks like when we send it, send the survey out to the other districts. We give them the title of the position. We develop a description of the position in terms of what the duties entail, what the qualifications are in terms of education experience. And then down in the rectangular box to the left are each of the respondents that we contacted and what their comparable job title was, and then their individual data, and then that's rolled up into the report that you previously saw. The entire study report is probably close to 400 pages. And so what I'm showing you are just some of the key snapshots that when you do look at the entire report, you'll be able to interpret some of the tables within that context. Should make for some great bedtime reading at some point. Next slide. And so we've come back. Every position now has been assigned to a pay grade, and every employee has been assigned to a step within a pay grade based on where their current salary is recommended to be, based on any adjustments that are reflected in the study. The current structure that we put together has a table that has job grades that spread all the way from 1-on-1 up to 140. It has 20 steps within the pay structure. And within those steps, there are 2.2 increments between each step. And so each year, if an employee was granted a step increase, they would get 2.2% by moving to the next step. Here, this is the unified schedule for the classified positions. What we've been able to do, and this is just an example here, but we've set a floor, wage floor, for the district. So if the study is adopted, no job within the district will pay less than $11.53 per hour. That would be the minimum value for any position within the district. And we think that puts you in a very competitive position. As you all know, there are tremendous conversations and movements around the country to increase the minimum wage. Unfortunately, at federal level, there hasn't been a lot of action on that, so the states and localities have taken the lead on moving that forward. I've done work for several organizations in Georgia, Virginia, and Florida that have gone forward and implemented either an 11, 12, or $15 wage floor. Most have, if they're going to 15, they usually do it over a two or a three-year period. Many of them, like we're proposing here, we're saying that you should implement the study at the proposed minimum level of at least 11.53, which enhances your position to fill those lower-level positions in the organization. Next slide. There's another report, or a table in the report, where we found a few people whose jobs were, based on their actual duties, were not appropriate based on industry standards. And so we created a report within the report called Class Comparison or Job Title Comparison, where we looked at what you currently classify the job as and what, based on modern or current human resources practices, we recommended changing the title to a more appropriate title that reflected the nature of the work. Keep in mind, it's been over 20 years since the district did a comprehensive classification and compensation study. So it's not unusual that we find some jobs that were misclassified, and the people, of course, in those positions were misclassified. But we've identified those folks, and we've identified what the appropriate title should be, and all that's contained in the comprehensive report. Next slide, please. The next section talks about implementation. What is it going to cost to move the employees from the proposed compensation system to the new compensation system that we designed? Now, one of the things I want to talk about in terms of compensation systems in general is that compensation systems are not static. They need to evolve. And so one of the challenges I think the district has had in the past, which explains why the starting salaries particularly were so low, is that you have not adjusted your scales on a manual basis. Now, we're doing the comprehensive study now, so you won't have to adjust the scales again until a year from date of implementation. But a year from date of implementation, you need to adjust those scales by either the Consumer Price Index or the Employment Cost Index. We recommend the Employment Cost Index, because it's a measure of what employees are experiencing in terms of benefit increases and pay increases from a macro level. And that's broken down by region of the country, and that's published every quarter by the Federal Department of Labor. So for the region that the state of Arkansas sits in, for the past 12 months, the ECI has been somewhere around 2.4, 2.5%. So if we were going to adjust them, this year, we do it by 2.4, 2.5. So all of the tables would go up by that macro amount. But you don't have to do that until a year from implementation, because we've already factored that into the tables that we prepare. Now, the implementation report is very detailed. It breaks down all the employees by department and school. It shows you their current title. It shows you their current pay range, shows you the proposed title if there's a change. The new salary range is we proposed it. It shows you what grade and step we're recommending they be assigned to. It lets you know whether or not they're full-time or part-time. It also shows you the date of hire or the date they were promoted into their most current position. And then it shows you the breakdown of the adjustments that we're proposing that they receive. And so it's very detailed, and then it summarizes that for each department, each school, and then for the organization in total. And so let's talk about the numbers specifically for the district in totality. Next slide, please. Because the district has not been able to grant raises consistently for some time, we're recommending that, as a part of the study, every employee receive at least a 1.5% cost of living adjustment as a part of the study. That would cost roughly $730,261. There will still be some employees who are below the Step 1 of the new salary schedule. So we would need to bring them up at least to Step 1, which would be about $104,407. And because we have a step structure, we need to make sure every employee follows on a finite step. So to place them in their proper step would cost $633,387. And so the total cost to implement the study, and this is just salary, this does not include fringe benefits. So you need to add probably 30, 33% on top of that, and Kelsey would be the one to tell you specifically what that number is. But to implement the study just in pay increases, you're talking about $1.4 million. And so I misspoke earlier when I said the increment between the steps was 2.2. It's actually 2.8%. And this would increase payroll by 2.6%, which is actually pretty, pretty low. Anytime we see an overall payroll change that's approaching 5% or greater, that's a significant red flag. Even with some of the challenges that the district has had, you're still not as bad off as I initially anticipated, and perhaps some may have thought. But we're looking at about 1.4% to implement the study. We would implore you, as resources are available, to try to do that at the start of the next budget year. If you could come up with more than 1.5% cost of living, that would be great. But we think at a minimum, 1.5% cost of living, and then implement the remaining figures in the study. And so I think of the, I met, you know, dozens of people within the district during the past 12 and a half months, some really hard-working people. Some have stood by and been loyal through some difficult times. And this would be a great time to acknowledge those that have stuck in there and hung in there with the district through some turbulent times. And we're not asking to overpay anybody. We're asking to pay a fair wage based on where the market is and based on the duties and responsibilities that the employees currently have within the district. We will continue to provide consulting services to the HR staff as you go through the process of budget and review the study. Any adjustments or changes to implementation scenarios, we certainly stand by to provide that as a part of the service. And it has been a pleasure working with Robert and Mike and Kelsey on this project. And if there are any questions that you have, Madam President, I certainly am prepared to address those at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your presentation. And I do have a couple, but I yield to my fellow directors. Go ahead and unmute, please, and begin speaking if you have questions, thoughts, or concerns related to what Mr. Campbell just presented.
Well, I'll jump in then. Thank you very much, Ms. Hatter. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
I wonder if you might offer some brief rationale to some of the numbers that were in the final recommendations? The thought about 1.5% cost of living increase, what makes that? They recommend the number, the difference in the step increase, 2.8. And that neighborhood, what makes that the appropriate step difference? And then the 20-year step schedule, why, and what makes 20 years a good number?
Okay, let's start with the 1.5%. One of the things that we looked at, or we looked at what other districts around the country, particularly the districts that we surveyed, and then some other districts that are comparable size. We looked at certainly the Consumer Price Index over the past 12 months. And we're seeing cost-of-living adjustments in the public sector anywhere from $1. anywhere from, uh, uh, one point five to three percent. And so understanding that the di- district does have some financial challenges, we felt we'd come back with a conservative one and a half percent. Now, and I'll digress just a moment. Uh, when we talk about compensation, compensation theory, uh, by definition, a cost-of-living adjustment really isn't a pay raise. It's a hedge against inflation. If I can go to Publix tonight with a hundred bucks and buy, uh, 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 buy fifty items, then the rule is my salary should be indexed, so next year I can go back and buy those same number of items, uh, without, without losing any purchasing power. But over decades in this country, due to entitlement programs like VA pensions and Social Security, uh, uh, that were indexed to help maintain purchasing power, local governments, school districts particularly, adopted that as a way to grant, uh, salary increases. And so that's a long one around about what he'll say, how it came up with a one point five. Um, tw- steps, um, s- s- school districts predominantly across the country have steps. City and county governments, it's probably a mixed bag, probably about sixty, forty, uh, without steps, uh, forty percent with steps, when you're talking about city and county. Some people believe that i- if state retirement says you're fully vested for retirement at twenty-five years or twenty-eight years, then you should have that same number of equivalent steps. Uh, I'm not necessarily a fan of that. I don't think we should pay folks simply based on their longevity with the organization. There needs to be some value there. And so when we talk about setting the number of steps, twenty steps is a realistic number. When you look at the makeup of your workforce, more people are probably gonna hit the age requirement than the length of service required. And so it's more cost-effective to have fewer number of steps. It's easy to add additional steps if we need to. But when we started looking at other districts on that list, they were anywhere between twenty and twenty-five steps. And so we went with twenty, twenty steps. And then our computer program that we ran the regression model, it set the increments at two point eight percent. And if I changed that to twenty-five steps, it would probably reduce that increment to somewhere around two point two or two point, two point three percent. So it's automatically set by the system.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Adams. Uh, do we have any other, uh, questions?
Yes, Director Hatter, um, President Hatter. Um, so thank you for that excellent presentation. Um, I have, um, two questions. You mentioned that there were some positions that were not in line with or in keeping with industry standards. Um, and I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit more? Are those positions where we are currently paying more than what is in the industry standards? Um, or, or what did that really mean?
No, that wasn't a pay issue. That was a, a title or classification issue. For example, there were a number of individuals in maintenance referred to as drivers. Well, they, they, they remove and replace furniture, that, and do light-duty maintenance work. But the payroll system carries them as drivers. So we wanted to make sure that their title adequately reflected the nature of the work. Those are the type of things when I'm talking about where it doesn't reflect industry standards. There were probably fewer than ten people whose current salaries are above the top step, number twenty, and they have been there for a very long time. And so that's not unusual, uh, that you may have a few very long people, over twenty years, that, that are over the top of max. But, uh, the, the, this, the problem was a significant number of people, um, below, you know, the, the entry levels. And so that one point five percent actually brought up a lot of people, as you probably see. And it still left some that still didn't come up to the, uh, to the, to the minimum.
Thank you, um, that, that explains tha- that question for me, thank you. Uh, the other question I had, and I think that you probably touched on this, and I just did not really understand it or didn't catch it. Um, you mentioned at the outset, the, the morale problem when you have people coming on as new hires at a higher rate than someone who is an experienced, um, teacher or employee. Um, does this proposal eliminate or address that problem?
It, it addresses it to a large extent, and, and in compensation, we call that, uh, salary compression. When, if we look at a scale, and then we look at years of service with the organization, and we notice that if we ran a scatter diagram, we've got all these little dots down here toward the bottom. We've got large numbers of folks with one year, six years, seven years, but they're all maybe down at the first quartile of the scale. Their salaries are compressed. And so in order to break that up, we've got to find some mechanism to move some of the senior people up to higher steps. And so this process naturally does that to some degree, but you're always gonna have some of that because you can't just throw money to fix it because it would basically require paying large sums of, 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 of money based on just longevity, which that's something we're not necessarily comfortable with or advocate. But it does address it. What I was specifically speaking of is when I talked to some of the supervisors and directors, and they've got some critical positions they, they need to fill. And I'm talking about positions that are not routine, everyday positions where you're just gonna go out in the street and pull somebody in. These are probably degreed positions, or positions that require a certain license or certification, but they're not teaching. So it's gonna be hard to get that applicant pool to begin with because everybody in the region is looking for that skill set. And so you've got a choice to make. You've offered Russell fifty thousand dollars. Russell is the candidate you wanna hire, experienced and skillset. But Russell says he can't come for fifty-eight. Well, there are three other people with the same job title as Russell, and they don't make fifty-eight. But this position's been vacant for, for three months. You gotta fill it. So I'm gonna go ahead and pay Russell a fifty-eight, and he's gonna leapfrog the other three people who are making fifty, fifty-one, or fifty-two. That's the kind of scenario I'm talking about. Now, your compensation system should be flexible enough, and your policies, which we provided some guidelines on policies, where you can fairly set starting salaries based on experience when they come in. The problem you had now was you were having to bring them so far up into the scale that it was really creating disparities. And so it's okay if we have to bring in a new hire, uh, at a step three or a step four instead of step one, if they've got the experience and education to support it. But if they're just meeting the minimum qualifications, then you need to be getting them around step one. But you had instances where they were, they were meeting the minimum qualifications, but you were having to bring them at step four, step five because the salary scales were so low. So this process addresses that by raising the overall scales to a more competitive level. That's more of a reflection of the market. But in order to maintain that, y- you have to adjust them slightly every year. And then every five or six years, you go through this exercise again and do a comprehensive study. Why? Number one, the market changes. The labor market moves forward. We could have a recession, we could have robust growth. We need to reassess internal changes. Mike may decide to go to Hawaii and sit on the beach. You bring in a new superintendent, he restructures the whole place. Uh, departments change, duties change. So every five to seven years, you probably wanna redo the whole thing. But you wanna make adjustments to the overall scale every year.
Thank you so much for, for your report, for your answers. Thank you very much.
No problem. Hawaii is okay with mine?
Probably ready for, for vacation. Um, I heard, okay, Director, uh, Callaway?
Okay, so, this being clear, are you saying that if a person should come in to Little Rock School District, let's say, and they have like five years' experience? And they might have more education than the person who is doing the same job? Okay, is that what you mean by leapfrogging? Or are you saying that a person who, that you, I mean, you've really gotta have this person, so you're gonna leapfrog them regardless to what their education or their years in? I mean, that's the point I kinda was confused.
Yeah, let, let's say, for example, we posted a job where the minimum requirement is a bachelor's degree and five years. And we already have three people in that position now, and they all have a bachelor's degree. Maybe one's been there two years, one been there, uh, six years, one's been there five years, okay? And then I apply for one of those positions because somebody left. Remember, the minimum is a bachelor's and five. I show up, I've got a master's and twelve years of experience. You're not gonna be able to hire me at the minimum. I, I'm not gonna take that kind of pay cut. But as a hiring manager, you've got to say, or decide, is this an investment that benefits or reaps dividends for the district? By having someone who can come in, hit the ground running, there's a minimal learning curve, other than learning the culture of the district a- and, and the processes. But in terms of the job, they got a blueprint of what needs to be done, and they can come in and do it. Common sense is you probably gotta hire that person. You should hire that person. You're gonna have to bring them over people that have been there for a few years.
Oh, absolutely, uh.
But you can't, you can't let that get out of control. You gotta have a policy that says, w- we, we'll go above the, 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 the minimum, but we got a cap on that.
Okay, now, same job, but we're talking about more years and more degrees here.
Okay.
Of course, you would have to, you'd have, at whatever point you hired that person, you would have to pay them more money, right?
Right, but there are some instances where the education and experience were pretty much the same. But the market has moved, and in order to get that person, you've had to bring them a higher salary. There's been some of that, too.
That makes sense, uh, to me. Uh, well, that fits to me.
Well, if you hired, if you hired me three years ago at fifty thousand dollars, and I had a bachelor's degree and five years' experience, and then similar position is open now, three years later, and you haven't raised a person who's been there salary at all, their salary hadn't moved, but the market has moved, and I know what my value is. If you want me, and I know what my, my values were, then either you're gonna meet that in the current context, or you're not.
Okay, but, uh, that's if you don't have like, uh, a step, like, the, uh, Little Rock School District is, at some point, I don't know what it's like now, had a step system. Every year, you got a step, okay? Now, if a person came in, let's say, with twelve years' experience with a PhD for the same job, of course you expect to make more money. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that was getting kinda confusing. Now, if they came in with the same thing as, as the person that has had that same year, uh, uh, that same amount of time, and how can you justify the pe- the person that is never, haven't been there, who's been there? How can you justify not giving them a raise? Are you talking about a raise for, um, it's, it's almost like pay for play? If, if I, if I decided that you're going, uh, I like you, and you, you do a really good job, so I'm gonna give you a raise, but I'm not gonna give her a raise 'cause even though they're doing the same job? Is that what you're talking about? Merit pay?
No, no, ma'am. What I'm saying, let, let's, let's use this, uh, uh, another example. Let's say mechanic. It happens more with perhaps those positions. You don't raise your pay scale. It's been flat. Most people's salary has been frozen. But out there in the market, everybody's hiring mechanics. Car dealerships, school districts, mom-and-pop repair places. So I'm a mechanic, and you've got dozens of other mechanic. But you, the people that are currently employed, you haven't raised their pay. But the market pay has gone up. And so if you need a mechanic to get these buses rolling and cars rolling, you're gonna have to pay the market rate. And the market rate is probably gonna be more than what you're paying the people that are already employed. So in order to fill that position, you're gonna have to hire this person off the street. In some cases, you have to bring them in at a higher rate than the people that have been there.
Let me jump in here real quick. I, I wanna make sure, let me jump in.
Nature of business.
What we're, we're kinda getting off into, uh, an area that really isn't a huge issue within the Little Rock School District. I wanna emphasize a question that Ms. Callaway brought up. We will have steps still continued. We are not creating merit pay here. We're actually trying to create a more, a system that's much more clear for our existing employees and for our employees, potential employees. And, and so I, I wanna kinda gear us back because we're getting off into a, a lane here that, um, i- is, it impacts so few people that I don't think it's doing justice to the overall presentation. If, if we can kinda get back and, on, and I, I appreciate the, how you worded that, Ms. Callaway, because that helped define that we're not doing merit pay and that we are keeping steps. So thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Okay, um, Directors, are there any other, uh, questions? And for the sake of time, um, a, a couple, um, of my fellow, uh, directors have asked in, in the ballpark of what my question would be. So in the essence of time, I will parking lot, I, I, I will, uh, park my questions and not ask them. Um, anyone else have, uh, any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mason is trying to, um, raise his hand, I'm sorry, Ms. Hatter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, just a, just a general question about him coming back because we're not ready to make any kind of votes right, right now. So is he, is he available to come back?
Superintendent.
If, if Superintendent asks me to come back, I, I'll be happy to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. And, and if you don't mind, Ms. Hatter, I'm gonna go ahead and give my wrap-up, kinda tied to that question on this topic. So, you know, it was important for us to put this out in front of you because, you know, as we're doing the teacher negotiations, the teachers are interested to say, well, what are you doing for a bounce? Because there's always that, you know, wanna make sure that everyone's getting, you know, treated in a fair way. And so we had to kind of package this so that we can continue on with our teacher negotiations in good faith, and at the same time, be transparent with our employees and with you of what we've done with this management study. It was time. Uh, Mr. Campbell and his firm has been working on this for a year, and he has been more than willing throughout the process to say, whenever you think it's appropriate to come in. Now, also, I'm sure there's already board members thinking, when can we get a more detailed report? Because we've got five greens on this board and a whole bunch of golds on this board who love to look at budgets and love to look at detail. So, um, the plan will be that next week, um, Mr. Robinson and, uh, will be giving that, that information from Mr. Campbell. We will receive it from him next week, and then we will share it with you as a board. But then we'll also start to share it with employee groups for them to look at. And then again, we can always come back to it. I also wanna emphasize the fact that what Mr. Campbell said, um, related to where we have our biggest gaps in terms of, um, salary disparity. Is it the beginning part of our salary? Remember, that's the same for our teachers as we work on that, too. So that's kind of a consistent theme for us. And then, um, the, the, the next thing I want you to do is understand is that there's a resolution, and we will modify this resolution just a little bit, and we will be putting that into your board packet. And the resolution starts to create the commitments that we would like you to say, yeah, we're in. It doesn't knock, uh, totally, uh, lock, seal, an employee raise, but it, it continues to say, we want to go ahead and move forward on this, we, we're on the right direction. Um, and so you'll get to look at that resolution. That will be an, an action item for us later this month. And so, uh, you'll get an updated copy of that resolution. We, we've done a couple tweaks to it. We probably will do a couple tweaks after this presentation. And, and that will help you better understand a little bit of how the board starts to interact, um, with the, the salary. The final thing is that we are working with, um, our Human Resource Group, with instructional side, with, in Jerem, Dr. Owa's house, uh, to also find a way to do a pandemic pay, um, for our employees. Now, you noticed that I did not use the word bonus, and we, we don't wanna use that word bonus because that would not be allowed within the ESAR. But we are going to, uh, we've determined a way to honor, uh, efforts made by staff, all staff, all staff, with a pandemic pay. And our intent is to come forward with that pandemic pay, um, prior to the end of the school year so that the, all current employees would receive that benefit for their efforts that have happened throughout this pandemic. Now, remember, that's just- Now, remember, that's just a, a one-time type payment, but it's, I know many of you brought that up before, we figure out, we think we finally got enough guidance that we're gonna be able to move forward on that, and that will also come in, in the form of your resolution uh, that will come to you for action on the twenty second. And Ms. Hatter, I'll turn that back over to you. I hope that kind of concludes this part of the presentation. Obviously, this is just a beginning point, we're gonna have further discussions on this topic, and once you get the report, uh, certainly there'll probably be some questions that we'll have to work to answer, uh, from you either individually or collectively.
Okay, thank you Superintendent for, um, summarizing and wrapping. Uh, that, uh, Miss, Mr. Campbell, um, appreciate, uh, your, uh, your presentation, it was very thorough. Um, the fact that, um, the, the district, uh, has have not done a, um, a salary, um, a, a salary increase or a report or survey, much of what you have done in, in the last, uh, twenty years. That, that, that is, um, telling of, of the district, but it's also uh, re- refreshing that like, uh, we are looking at, um, at least bringing people up to tw- twenty twenty-one salary and, um, looking at COLA and and then a lot of the things that you highlighted with, within your pres- presentation. Um, we look forward to seeing you, um, in the future, obviously look like we will be. And, um, with that, I appreciate you, uh, so with that, we are closing out, uh, this session for salaries, and thank you, um, Mr. Campbell. Okay, um. Moving on, we're still in the third portion of our agenda. And the, uh, last, uh, piece of the district reports will be the personnel learning committees. And, uh, with that, we will have, uh, uh, Hope Worship. Hope Worship will present, I see Dr. Owa on my screen. So we will start off with Dr. Owa, and then, uh, we will go into, uh, his team, uh, doing the presentation. Dr. Owa.
Thank you, President Hatter, uh, good evening again, Board of Directors. Uh, tonight, we would like to, uh, share with you the professional learning, professional learning community journey that, uh, Little Rock School District, uh, has been on and, uh, the impact that it's having on our instructional, uh, setting at the school level, but also at the district level. And so, uh, Darian Smith, uh, who is the Executive Director of Elementary, Randy Rutherford, Executive Director of Secondary, and Hope Worship, our Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, uh, will all participate in this brief, uh, presentation, uh, for you and be, uh, open, uh, and available for questions at the end. So Mr. Smith is gonna be going to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Owa, I'm gonna drop right in, and good evening, Board. Uh, what is a professional learning community? Becoming a professional learning community, or P L C, requires an ongoing process in which educators work collaboratively in reoccurring cycles of collective inquiry and action research to achieve better results for students they serve. Professional learning communities operate under the assumption that the key to improve learning for students is continuous job embedded learning for educators. A P L C is not a model or a program, it is an approach or process. There are six essential characteristics of a P L C. We have shared mission, vision, values, and goals. Educators in a P L C benefit from clarity regarding their shared purpose, a common understanding of the school they are trying to create, collective communities to help move the school in the desired direction, and specific measurable, attainable, and results oriented and time bound smart goals that mark their progress. Collaborative teams focus on learning. In a P L C, educators work together interdependently in collaborative teams to achieve common goals for which they are mutually accountable. The structure of the school is aligned to ensure teams are provided the time and support essential to adult learning. Collaboration is a systematic process in which we work together interdependen- inter- inter- independently, I'm getting tired tongue here, uh, to analyze and impact professional practice in which to improve our individual and collective results. Collective inquiry. Teams in a P L C relentlessly question the status quo. Seek new methods of teaching and learning, test those methods, and then reflect on the results. Building shared knowledge of both current reality and best practices is an essential part of each team's decision-making process. Action orientation and experimentation. Members of a P L C consistently turn their learning into insight, into, of learning and insights into action. They recognize the importance of engagement and experience in learning and in testing new ideas they are do, learning by doing. Commitment to continuous improvement. Not content with the status quo, members of a P L C consistently seek better ways to achieve mutual goals and accomplish their fundamental pur- purpose of learning for all. All teams engage in the ongoing cycle of gathering evidence of current levels of student learning, developing strategies and ideas to build the unstress and act, address the weaknesses of the students. Implement the strategies and ideas, then analyze the impact of those changes to discover what was effective and what was not, and then applying the new knowledge in the new cycle of learning, uh, for continuous improvement. And then finally, results orientation. Educators in a P L C assess their efforts on the basis of tangible results. They are hungry for evidence of student learning and use that evidence to inform and improve their practice. Rigdefor summed it up best by stating, the success of a P L C concept depends not on the merits of the concept itself, but on the most important element in the improvement of any school, the commitment and persistence of the educators within.
So one, three years. As an organizational arrangement, the professional learning community is seen as a powerful staff development approach. And it has a strong, potent strategy for school change and improvement. It's about capacity building and not, uh, being top-down, uh, professional development that's given, uh, to our students, but requiring an ongoing process to establish a school-wide culture that develops teacher leadership explicitly focused on building and sustaining school improvement efforts. The P L Cs, as we call them, shift the focus on school reform from restructuring to reculturing. Uh, and of course, we utilize Solution Tree, and they confirm that if implementing the process with fidelity, you will see results within three years. And as we know, uh, as many programs, as with, uh, other programs, three years is really the timeframe to really, uh, be able to assess how a program has made an impact in an instructional setting. And so in the fall of twenty nineteen, Mr. Smith, Mr. Rutherford, and Mrs. Worship joined the district team. And their first task was to draft the district plan of support. At that time, the state had shifted away from the district improvement plan to a district plan of support, which fundamentally, fundamentally changes the way we look and participate at the district's role, uh, at the district level, uh, when it concerns school improvement. It is our responsibility to support schools and their school improvement goals. So we moved from being compliance and really having, for the lack of a better word, dictatorship of the schools, to a supportive role. So the schools would, uh, the team started by reviewing all school improvement plans. The schools would, would develop their school improvement plans. And then the district would, uh, review those school plans, school improvement plans, to look for common things throughout. And then after reviewing the plans, the three common themes were identified. And those three, uh, things were developing, developing collaborative relationships in buildings, improving teacher, teaching practice, and improving literacy scores. And so goal number one of the plan, as shown on this slide, is to, or speaks to developing professional learning communities in all buildings. And so when the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, exit criteria was drafted, and the exit criteria plan was drafted last spring, exit criteria number one aligned with our goal of establishing a P L C across the district. So you will see as the slide indicated that we started from the school, uh, staff, uh, developing their school improvement plans, to developing our district plan of support, and then, of course, our exit plan, uh, being developed from that.
And then we get to where are our schools, where have we been, and how did we, do we pull our schools and put them into two different cohorts? Also, what we did is a threesome, uh, when we were looking at the plans themselves, we looked at what we considered our most need schools, the schools that just needed an impact of support the quickest. And that, that makes up the cohort one schools based on the information that, that we saw. In cohort one, sir, I know we've shown this to you before, but again, in cohort one, they were assigned again based on need. Well, we knew also we couldn't put all forty-two schools through the same process at the same time. And so we divided again the schools up based on multiple different parts of data, uh, in order to determine which cohort they were gonna be placed in. Next slide, Dr. Owa. From there, then you can see at the top of this chart, the three-year plan that Dr. Owa mentioned earlier. Where are we? Well, a year ago, not this school year, but a year ago, we started with Cohort One. They, of course, were in the P L C at Work Coaching Academy. That was offered by the state and through Solution Tree itself. This current year for Cohort One, they're in what we call the blending learn, blended learning model. And you may say, okay, well, what, what does that mean? Well, basically what it means is they're offered a year-long support that basically leads to a combination of services, again, through Solution Tree, which is who we go through for our services as far as professional development is concerned. But that would be interactive videos, coaching from them online, uh, online professional development, uh, videos, interactive webinars between them and their school leadership teams, and obviously print resources that come from Solution Tree themselves. The whole idea is to create a, a self-sustaining P L C model within the school so that they can continue to engage in that cycle of continuous improvement. And so that's Cohort One. Cohort Two is just starting out where Cohort One was last year, this year. It, it looks a little bit different because again, these were supposed to have been face-to-face meetings with, with the group as they came in. But obviously, as we all know, because of the pandemic, all of this has had to be done online. But they are in that original set of the P L C at Work Coaching Academy that Cohort One went through last year. And we've had six days during this school year, three sessions, two days each, uh, accompanied with resources plus phone and email support from Solution Tree and their consultants. It also has helped us build a set of skills and development action plan for initiating change within our schools surrounding the P L C model. Uh, they were all completed, just so the board knows, that, that group finished in March with all six of those sessions. And so also, I'll just point out before we, we move on, you can also see on the third year where Cohort One's headed, they're headed to RTI Coaching Academy. That's a response to intervention, which is what do we do after we get the results? And the results aren't exactly what we want it to be for kids. What are we gonna do? What are our actions we're gonna take to help, again, uh, help those kids? And then, of course, you can see where Cohort Two is headed to where Cohort One was in the blended learning model. And the whole concept again is, is that Cohort One will be ahead of Cohort Two, but they also get the opportunity to mentor with Cohort Two as they're going through.
So the P L C expectations that all buildings, and that includes the district office, within the Little Rock School District, will function as a P L C. And we do that on, uh, at the district level every Tuesday, we meet collaboratively as a group. And then all buildings will be supported through the three-year cycle of training. All buildings will have collaborative team time built into their master schedule, sched- scheduled during the school day for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and beyond. And then all buildings will form a guiding coalition who will lead the work in their building. By fall twenty twenty-one, all collaborative teams will develop, administer, and review the data from Common Assessment at least once per nine weeks. And then the, uh, funding source, uh, of course, professional development funds, Title II A, uh, and ten oh three funds will fund, uh, the training as well as the resources that are needed uh, for the implementation of the collaborative teamwork, um, and building that professional learning community in all the buildings. Our district commitment to continually support through training, job embedded support, and not just, um, supporting from afar, but being in, uh, the buildings, uh, walking alongside with our principals and teams and in support, uh, of their work. And then buildings, uh, will utilize their Title One or Ten Oh Three funds to contract, uh, contract, to contract additional support from Solution Tree. Uh, we do wanna say that each year the district team will set tights or non-negotiable expectations to continue to move the work of professional learning community towards. The tights will align with the training that is being offered in the district at the time and in line with the natural progression of the process. And then in the fall of twenty twenty-one, all teachers will participate in that Common Assessment training to, uh, lay the foundation of the expectation of Common Assessments being developed, delivered, and reviewed next year and beyond. So where are we? Um, Hope will lead us from here.
Sure, so at this point, like you've already heard, all of our schools have attended the P L C Coaching Academy, and, and this is fundamental, it's six days. It's very intensive training, um, it's a team of five to seven that came from each building, and they really learned the foundation of the P L C process, of what collaborative teams should be focusing on and how that work should be happening. Uh, Mr. Rutherford and I were in a building just the other day, and the, I think the exact quote was, we, they had gone through the academy last year, and we said, so how, tell us how last year and this year looked different. And, uh, the quote was, we have a purpose now and we know why we're meeting in collaborative teams. And this was a building that, uh, to be honest, was pretty resistant prior to this year, and so just seeing their growth there, and they were very excited to share with us, um, their focus, their, their, their energy around their collaborative teaming and how it's making their lives easier as teachers. Our principals have attended a three-day assessment training. The reason we put this in, uh, when we first came on and spoke with Solution Tree, they, we talked to them about, we said, you know, we've been spending money with you guys for ten years, and we've been training on P L C for ten years. What is the problem? Why are we not further along than, than we are? And, um, the, the advice that we, that we were given was from the consultants that had been in, the observations were that we were getting stuck on using data, that we would, we were meeting in collaborative teams, and sometimes we were focusing on the right work, but we never were getting past that using the data to actually make decisions. And so that's why we had our principals go through a three-day assessment literacy training this year. That was three separate days spread out across the year, and with the plan of our teachers getting trained in the fall on Common Assessment and how to use data. And then the C and I team will be in regularly in buildings, supporting with that data interpretation and using of it. We do have two buildings currently in a, a more intensive program, that's Mabelville Elementary and Watson Elementary, they were chosen by the state to be a part of their, um, pilot school program. It's a very intensive model, they have lots of support in their building, um, around the P L C process and, and making strides in that direction. And we had, I think, three buildings that are going to get, uh, are being looked at for Cohort Four. And they, they are in the second round of interviews, so we're very excited about that. And then lastly, buildings have built common planning time into the school day for the core areas. It's very important that teachers had time in the master schedule to meet together, and that will continue. So we have established the essential standards in E L A in math, and why is this important? Because if we're meeting together as a team, we have to be teaching on, from a common book, right? And we have to kind of know the common language that we're using. And so the essential standards, uh, we had teams of teachers work last summer. We had over a hundred and eighty teachers participate in that process. They looked at, what are we supposed to teach in every grade level in math and English? And, um, how do we? And, um, how do we choose the the standards that are most essential that we're going to guarantee kids learn by the end of the year? We're going to go through that process with science and social studies, starting in the end of May, April, and throughout the summer, and then other content areas will follow. So, um, we have a plan for, um, the CTE areas, uh, fine arts to follow after this year. And then schools have started to inquire about developing what we call proficiency skills. And all that is, is if if this is what I'm supposed to learn, it clearly outlines everything that builds up to that. And that's just a real clear picture for students and for teachers about what is it I have to do as a student so that you say I've learned this? And so, uh, the, those questions are being asked right now, and and we're going to look at supporting schools through that. So we did survey our schools and we asked, um, where they were in some questions around the PLC process and the training that they've, um, received. So you've got the data here, um, seventy-two percent of the respondents, and we we had eighteen respondents that came in out of all of our buildings, seventy-two percent being a cohort two and the other from cohort one. We asked about, do they, did they understand the purpose of the training that they were attending? It's very important that we know purpose, and, um, all of them did say that they understood the purpose. If you have a few more questions, and and we can handle that. Have you seen a positive impact? And and this question for, um, for for our team was very important. Um, have you seen a positive impact in your building based on the training that you have received? And, um, everyone was in the, uh, neutral to above category with most of our schools saying, yeah, that they agree, they've seen a positive impact, and they just want more time to implement. We asked them just about what are, what do they need additional support in? This will help us as the district level guide, you know, what is it we need to be providing the supports in? And you can see the largest area was the developing of common assessments, and that lines right up with what we're planning to do in the fall. And that's kind of the natural progression where they should be. And so it it makes sense that that would be the next, um, information that we that we provide them with. They're getting all this information to our buildings. Many of our cohort two buildings were saying that. And again, that's a very natural thing. They had a team of five go through the training. So now how do we get that to our entire building? And remember, they will receive as part of this plan, um, they will receive intensive coaching in their building next year. So that is where that process will get to their wider group. On this slide, all, what this shows is we asked on a scale of, uh, well, on four different levels, starting out is blue, developing, deepening, and sustaining. So sustaining is green. And you really want on each of, there's actually seven critical areas, and we just took the first four because we know that we're just starting out. So we asked our buildings, um, on these first four critical elements of the success of a, of a high-functioning collaborative, uh, team or professional learning community in your building, where are you? And, um, what this slide tells us, if you look at the common assessment, you see a lot more blue there than other areas. And that's because many of our buildings are starting out with that or developing. Again, that lines up with where we know that they, um, that they are, and that that's what we have have observed when we're out. Teams are meeting, it's now time to start, um, having those common assessments in place. Team norms is something that's also very important, and we'll probably revisit that with many of our buildings, just, um, that's just how do we function as a team? And and those are so important, um, for the the collaborative teams to be high-functioning. Go ahead, Dr. O. And then lastly, we just asked for feedback, and, uh, the feedback we got was, and we told them, this is an anonymous survey, we said, guys, be totally honest with us because we need brutal honesty. Um, and one of the, the things, some of the things that stood out is the right work at the right time for our building. Uh, the sessions are informative and valuable. We look forward to continuing the work. Um, I think one of them may not have gotten on here, but just, we need some time, oh, there it is, we need some time to implement and bring to scale in our building. And so, um, the, the, the feedback from the buildings has been, you know, we have enjoyed what we've learned, but really it's now time to go do the work. So one of the things that we've been doing with our buildings, those cohort one buildings that you saw, many of them, uh, we are making our way around to and, um, going through a process with them. And there, there's a tool that Solution Tree has, it's called the Critical Issues for Team Considerations. It's eighteen questions, and the idea is that the team ranks themselves on those eighteen questions. And the process that we've gone through with a couple of buildings, um, has been to take the the eighteen questions, rank yourself, and then put it anonymously into a Google form that we can all look at the data. Um, and a couple of our buildings are very nervous about doing that. At first, they didn't want to write, and I said, I'm not going to take this piece of paper up. Please be honest. And once they knew they could be honest, and nobody was going to look at that information, um, they, um, the conversation was really good in the, in the few buildings that we've been able to do this so far. And so, for example, you can see on the right side there, um, with team norms, this building is is pretty well set. They have their norms in place, they know what they're doing, and and they're, they're good there. Um, but on question two, we've analyzed student achievement data and set SMART goals. They're not all in the same place. So we talked about with that building, what are your goals going to be for next year based on the data that you have? And, um, they set some goals around what are their next steps in the process. So the big crux of the PLC process and collaborative teams is focusing on the right work. And if you go in buildings, you will hear, um, us talk about four critical questions. And the first question is, what, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? That's the first question that any collaborative team, when they're sitting down and talking, these are the four questions they should be focusing on. So it's what do we want our students to be able to do? How will we know that they've learned it? How will we respond when they do learn it, or sorry, when they do not? And how will we extend their learning for those who have demonstrated mastery? Or you may just hear, what do we do if they already learned it? And that's the crux of the process. You got to know what it is kids are supposed to to learn. We teach them, we assess, that's how we know if they learn it. So what's our assessment going to be? Let's come back and look at the data and decide, this group of kids got it, what do we do for them? This group of kids didn't, what do we do for them? And working as a team to analyze that data, to, um, come together with common resources, common assessment, and that's what drives the work forward. So we are, we will entertain any questions you have right now for us. Our main goal is just that you guys understood, understand what the PLC process is, um, understand where our buildings are and our desire and the building's desire to continue to be supported through the process, um, in the coming years.
Um, board, unmute, and, um, any, uh, questions you have for Dr. O or Mr. Rutherford and or Ms. Worsham, uh, please begin.
Ms. Worsham, uh, thank you for that presentation, Dr. O, um, and the entire staff, Mr. Rutherford, um, and Mr. Smith. Uh, I only have one question, and it's a question based on my general understanding of issues in the state. I don't know if it's an issue in LRSD, and so I just want to put it out there. Um, I know that as we have moved towards PLCs, there has been a concern, um, at least in other districts about protecting individual teacher planning time and making sure that they won't sacrificing that time in order to do this, uh, work, which is very important, but just that they need that planning time as well. Can you talk about how we as a district are handling that?
Uh, sure, I can start and team y'all add in here. Um, so in our secondary schools, our teachers have ninety minutes per day of protected planning time. Um, by law, it's two, two hundred minutes a week. And so we have, um, more than enough time, protected time in the secondary schools for that to, for student, teachers to have their planning time and also meet in their collaborative team. We don't expect teachers to meet every single day in their collaborative team. Uh, for most buildings, it's one, one period a week that they would meet in their team. So so that is, there's more than sufficient time there. Um, in the elementary school, we have carved out time during the day, um, so that teachers do still have their protected planning time that is required, as well as have time for the collaborative teams.
And I might add, Ms. Nolan, that when you get the, uh, agreement or the proposal from the PPC, when it gets to that preparation time, they go on full measure to address that as well inside of that, which does make sure that we fit every criteria that we have regarding the planning time individually and the planning time for the PLC teams themselves.
Well, and I, so I know that last session, there was a bill about changing the language so it wasn't just individual, and this team planning or group planning could actually be done during the, um, that protective planning time. I don't remember if that bill passed or not, but I know that some of those stress or frustration from teachers was that they needed to have, they wanted to do this, but they also needed to have that protective planning time, um, you know, to grade papers and talk to parents and all of that. And so, um, I just wanted to raise that and make sure that we are conscious and being, you know, mindful of that as we move forward in this process.
Any other, um, thoughts, comments, or questions for, um, Dr. O and his team?
I do, Ms. Helder. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I had just a couple of questions. The first would be, so on a school level, if if I was a parent with a child in the school with this, is there a way that I would, could tell over time that this is having an impact on my child and 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 at the school? And so how, what would that way be?
Well, we hope that parents will see a stronger instructional setting. When, when the teachers and, uh, leaders, uh, administrators meet in those collaborative teams, they're looking at individual student data. And so the hope is that parents will see not only, uh, their individual students, uh, increasing academically, but they will all, and and not just academically, because the teachers are able to even discuss attendance, behavior, uh, everything that really impacts our students. And so we should see a better student, better instruction, uh, increase in teacher capacity, increase in, uh, the dialogue that teachers have with parents about where their students currently are and what it would take to move their students, uh, for, uh, further, uh, academically, behaviorally. Um, you should see a shift in the culture of the school as well. Uh, it should be a more collaborative, uh, environment as well, and not just among teachers, but among support staff, among the principals. And and it's so important that we have done that work at the district level. We meet as a team to really decrease the silos. And when we found, when we're meeting together and discussing, um, my direct, uh, responsibilities, Randy's direct responsibilities, that all of our responsibilities and expectations really impact everyone else's. And so when we collectively, collaboratively meet together, we build a stronger, uh, instructional and professional environment. So that's my take of it, and I know the team may have something else.
Uh, the only thing I would add is, sorry, Mr. Rutherford.
No, go right ahead, Ms. Worsham.
The only thing I would add is you may see, uh, shared responsibility for students. And so some, in some buildings where they have some pretty high-functioning teams, um, in that, in that part where you go to, what do we do if they don't learn it? And what do you do if they don't? If you do, um, we have seen some of our buildings where maybe Ms. Worsham will take the students who didn't get it, because I really did. My students got it real well, but I, so I'm going to take the ones that didn't get it, um, and teach because I got something going on that that I know how to teach that particular standard. And Mr. Rutherford will take the students who already got it, and he will take, take and do an extension activity with them. So you may see your students being shared amongst different teachers, um, even in, within the content area.
Now, the only other thing that I would add to that, Mr. Adams, which really goes for the whole board, the thing is, when this rolls out, it really is equity and equality across the whole district as well. Because those essentials, going back to those essential standards that Ms. Worsham spoke to earlier, it guarantees us and the community that it doesn't matter what middle school, what elementary, what high school your child is in, they're getting the same educational quality in each one of our schools. Obviously, it's going to look different, like I said, to what Ms. Worsham mentioned, because the kids that get it, certain things will happen with them, and the kids that don't, certain things need to happen with them. But I think it also measures to what we talk, what y'all talk about quite a bit as a board on that equity and equality part as well.
And then finally, uh, when you look at the PLC process, it supports our school improvement plan, process as well. Uh, with our school improvement plans, we're setting goals at the school level, which then translate to grade level goals, classroom goals, and then drills, drills down to the individual student, and we're setting individual student goals, the assistance of the student being able to have input on setting that goal for themselves.
Okay. Thank you. One, my other question, in, uh, in due respect to Mr. Mason and Mr. Wood, the rest of us, you know, we're, we're playing catch-up with these things as board members anyway. And, um, so in a year from now, two years from now, as board members, what data points would we see that would let us know that this process is being effective and helpful?
You want me to take that one? Okay. Um, so I think that we should see a change in our, um, end-of-year assessment data if we really are working the process correctly in our N, and in our NWA data. Um, because if if teachers are really working in collaborative teams and focusing on the, on the four questions, then you get at the heart of students not learning something immediately. We're not waiting till the end of the nine weeks. And so then therefore, you're able to intervene much quicker. And, um, in, in a essence, in effect, that should show in our end-of-year scores because we're filling those gaps along the way. We're not waiting until the end of a nine weeks or the end of a semester. So I would think in about three years, we should see, uh, a change in our end-of-year scores and our interim assessment scores. And statistically, with any new implementation program, I, it's a real, there's a really great graphic that shows like that implementation dip. So you have this kind of increase real quick early on, everybody's really excited about something, and then it gets hard to do the work, and you tend to see a decline. But then over the next two to three years, you see an incline, um, in, in the, typically in the data that you're looking at. Um, and so I would think it would have an impact there.
And I will also add, you, we should see within three years, uh, definitely growth in attendance and and behavior, uh, because if we're focusing on the individual needs, uh, like we should, and discussing those and sharing best practices within the collaborative team, then we follow that cycle of inquiry of plan, do, check. So if we make a plan and we put it into action, if it's not impacting our students in a positive way, then we go back to the table and our collaborative teams and we revise that plan. But I'll also, uh, tell you, I think it would be, um, more so qualitative data is that we would see an increase in teacher capacity and leader capacity. So that should shift. Uh, we should see more teachers having that professional collegial, uh, conversation about the, um, the, at the instructional environment and and the school setting.
Dr. O, just to follow up on that, to clear, so if that happens, how, how would we as board members know that?
We would, uh, continue to provide the reports, but also the data reports itself, like the, um, the, the attendance records, the, uh, discipline data, uh, the assessment data, but also as we do, uh, qualitative surveys, such as the one that, uh, Ms. Rusum has shared with you with the feedback from teachers on how they have grown. But we will also see it in the tests and leads data, which is part of our exit plan as well. Because if our teachers are growing their capacity by having that professional conversation, then that's going to show in their, um, in the teacher excellence support, uh, system as well as our, uh, leaders with their evaluation system as well. So we'll have those data, uh, sources as well.
And and I would just add to that, that, you know, if we're going, if we're asking our buildings to function as a professional learning community, and we should too as the district, part of that should be checking, checking. And so, um, I don't think it would be out of terms for us to to have regular surveys to our buildings, um, for that quantitative, that qualitative data like Dr. O was talking about. I mean, that's why we put the survey out when we did, because we had finished the training, and we wanted to know genuinely, what is the next step for you and how can we support you? So, um, I think there, there will always be data like that that should be regularly available because that needs to inform our work and what we do.
And, and Ms. Adams, I, I would add two more critical points that you should be able to see as far as that is concerned. One would be retention rate. It should drop, just so you know, because I know we talk about that sometimes, specifically on the middle school and elementary level. Second part, which should, should come about, would be at the high school level when we talk about credit recovery. There should be fewer students having to take credit recovery because we're implementing the model and they're actually getting their grades during normal class time. And so there's a bunch of data points that we can bring to you guys as we go down this path. And I, and I do agree with what Dr. O said, which is that attendance and discipline rate should change dramatically as well.
So, so, and I'll, my last thing is to round this up, and thank you for, for the additional information. Um, so all those different data points that I know we have access to some now and and some you'll be reporting on, but if I understand that correctly, that we really wouldn't be able to have a fair measure of success until three years from now? be able to have a fair measure of success until three years from now? Two years from now? What, so April of 2023, 20, what do you think?
No, to be fair, Mr. Adams, I will tell you that I'm confident in saying that we'll see success even this year. I mean, from the, but there being increments, because our schools, our individual groups are at different levels. But just based on the data from the survey that Hope shared, Mrs. Worsham shared earlier, we've seen growth. I mean, teachers, which is probably the most important aspect to all of this, teachers have seen growth within themselves, within their professional delivery. And that's one of the most important aspects of this. So I think we will see incremental success as we move or progress through these three years. But I think when we look at the overall success of implementation, we have to stick with something, because in the past, we haven't been able to be successful with things, because they would shift. When, I mean, a year, we didn't give things time to really be implemented, nor did we support it. So you have to give it time, and then you have to support it with professional development, with guidance, with resources, and that's what we're committing to do.
Yeah, and that's part of my question, you know, is I want to be fair and take what we said earlier, that it takes time, you know, to implement something to have the results. And so I'm just trying to get an idea in my head about when would be a reasonable fitting time to say, to evaluate, ah, this is what, this is the impact it has made or not made.
And I will end with this. I think some of the most telling data is direct observation. So if you all were, are able to tour the schools and see the collaborative teams in action, that will also show you how our teachers and leaders capacities are growing, and then how it translates back to the classroom, because of the meaningful, the in-depth conversation that takes place in those collaborative teams.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so Brownie, now this portion of, thank you.
I have one question, please. Director Johnson has one question, Madam.
Go ahead.
Thank you, guys, for your presentation. Do you think within the next one to three years that there will be a drastic decrease or percentage in the kids that are not reading on grade level under this model? Would that take three years before we can see if it's happening? Or would it be less than that, or is it happening now?
I can start there. So I think to see, there's a lot that would go into, that's going to go into us seeing the decrease in our students being able to read, or increase in our students being able to read. So I think it's a combination of the information shared with you in the literacy plan, as well as a focused use, a focused intervention for literacy, as well as the PLC process. I think it's a combination of all of that together. We are seeing, for example, in our Lexia data, I just looked at it earlier, 97% of our students are in grade level or above-grade-level material right now in kindergarten. And so that indicates to me that we're having an impact in that lower grade right now. And it's even at 75% are in and above grade level in first grade. And so I think overall, we're starting to see that trend towards our students being more competent readers. But I do think you're going to, you're looking at two to three years to really see a full impact.
If I can add to that, Director Johnson, I think that we're also going to have to be realistic of the impact that the pandemic has had on us this last year. For those students who have been virtual students, who we have tried to make sure that we made every effort to provide the support they need consistently throughout the year. But you'll see the work that the schools are planning to do this summer for learning loss that will continue into the 21, 22 school year, providing that, those gap measures to recover the time that students have lost over this last year, year and a half with the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for the presentation. I'm glad you guys mentioned learning loss, I'm going to work backwards, learning loss and literacy. And we know that our students have had a great deal of learning loss, and we know that for every year, it takes at least a year and a half to two years to recover. But I like the fact that the district is doing summer enrichment, as well as looking into the next school year to see what all supports need to happen to fill in whatever gaps may be there. Listening right to your, listening right to the presentation, I kept thinking about my experience when my daughter was at Gibbs and how, listening to you, and then it was like being back in Gibbs right under Dr. Hobbs, because this is how she ran that school. There was a lot of collaboration among teachers. There was a lot of meetings, pretty much everything you have said, and then it translated throughout literally the entire school, where it even set a culture and maintained the culture and the academic success level. So very appreciative of Dr. Owa, you and your team for rolling it out across the district with the PLCs. And my one point that I would like to see more of is really the participation, right, when you guys are sending out surveys? Because the only way you know if it's working is by people filling it out. And then if only 18 people are going to take the time to fill them out, or six people to fill it out, you really cannot get a strong pulse on what is going on. And so at the building level, we would need to see improvements there, providing the feedback. So, and so we're not, you know, continuing this 10-year relationship with our vendors and then asking them, well, what's going on? So we need to make sure that we're able to really measure what is going on with the help of our buildings. So good deal. Is there any other questions or comments from the board before we move forward on item number five? Okay, seeing that there's none, thank you, guys, for presenting and answering questions. Board members, I will direct your attention over to the agenda. And I take you guys had the time to review it, so I'm not going to go line by line for the agenda meeting for the 22nd. I will, so I'm going to, if you guys will unmute yourselves and speak to any, kind of go down in process. So starting maybe with D, is there any questions or thought with the district updates right from the agenda that was sent out? Okay, and so the consent items, they're very standard on what we would normally have with that, the solution tree contract potential consent item is in there. And then, so are there any questions about E?
Ms. Hatter, just a quick thing on the consent agenda. We did put the solution tree contract there because of the in-depth discussion we just had and deliverable. That really just is confirming that we're moving forward, and we do need to come forward with that contract every year. So that's why we put it in consent. If somebody has a different feel about it, we can pull it from there. But we thought that it would be one that would help us move our meeting more efficiently.
Thank you for that. Board, do you have any thoughts on E? Okay, hearing none. F, those are potential items, now action items. And you guys have them before you. And I could just read it for the public and our viewing audience in Little Rock and beyond. It's the ADE waiver for freshmen seminar. The text, the math textbook in the curriculum, adoption personnel policy manual for teachers. So those are the three things that we have for potential action items. Okay, hearing that there's no discussion or thoughts on those, moving forward to G, which is our student services, that is revisions, and it's also a first reading in my student handbook. Okay, hearing none, then H.
Quickly, Ms. Hatter, I will interject on that one, just as a placeholder on the handbook. Please remember that, you know, it's a first reading, but know that we will have, and we'll bring this up again, but there will be adjustments that will have to be made after the legislative session. So the changes that the legislative group may have made that would impact the handbook won't be in there at this point. But we've kind of handled all the other aspects of it and just kind of get it ready, so to speak.
And two, for the listening audience, he's talking about our current legislative assembly that is in session right now, and they're currently passing laws that will impact the way that the district govern and move forward, which will affect our policies. So that's what our superintendent, Mike Boer, is talking about. Okay, I is the acad, yeah, the academies, and that's the summer academy proposal for lost learning, but much of what Dr. Owa and then his team spoke about to address the loss of learning.
Director Hatter, President Hatter, you skipped H, I believe we were, maybe.
The personnel, I apologize. The personnel, H is personnel, September work action.
Um, is that? I know that in a previous meeting, we asked for some legal guidance on that. Is that what that item is? I just, you know, I don't really know exactly what the plan is as far as presenting that item.
Yeah, so that is to circle back around and address, right, to have a board address on the September work action and to answer any questions and to, to address it, because it keeps coming up. And so we need to put a resolve to some point to it, whether it's in addressing or something else, whatever comes out of the board, because it will be a board conversation or discussion. Of course, the district will have, be a part of the discussion. And so we will hear information from the district. We will have follow-ups to questions that have been asked in public, as well as in between our meetings with directors and the district, and go from there.
Okay, well, but I will, but I will just wait and not make any, you know, comments or get into the merits of that at all, write me out, and just save all of that for the, for the actual meeting. I just, I didn't, I didn't know if this was at the point where we would be getting the update on the legal guidance that had been requested before, so.
Yeah, so for Nolan, what this is for today, it is just, this evening, we are just going over all of the agenda items, and we aren't taking any, obviously, actions on these agenda items. But then we are, this is the moment for the board to express how they feel about the items, or else if it needs to be tweaked, or anything like that. B, before the district sends out all of the supporting documents to go with these items. And it also provides an opportunity for the district to address any of our concerns, if that makes sense. Okay, I just did an overview, just for anybody else that really wasn't towards you. And then H, okay, we did HI, it's the academies. I just went over that, that's the lost learning that Dr. Owa and his team talked about. And then physical governance, and then right there with the fiscal, the debt extension, as well as the audit, and then our monthly expenditure report. I will put a pause right there just to reiterate that the budget that we are seeing now, it is a budget that was already approved for the 21, 2021 school year. And so this board will not start getting into creating the budget or having input on the budget for 21, 22, until, I believe, next month. And so the monthly report, and this is more for the public, is, it is just a report of expenditures that have already been approved. So remember, we came in at the end of the first semester of this year, 111 days ago. Okay, so the other.
President Hatter, I'm sorry, this is on that budget or on that agenda item. And I'm, I don't know exactly how to phrase this question, but I want to put it out there, because I think it's very important, and we might want to just go ahead and put it on the district's radar as something we need to be talking about under this item when we have the meeting. So I think that's kind of how I will frame it. I started thinking about the timeline for the state review of our exit criteria, when we would be going through this budgetary process, and when we would be potentially looking to ask the voters for a millage extension. And I think it is fair to say that getting out of state control will be a big part or a big factor in a millage extension vote. It has been in the last two millage extensions, is the state control. And so if we are seeking to be out of state control by the time we are asking voters for a potential millage extension, that means that we have to meet those exit criteria before that. And then in order to do that, the governor has said, there was an exchange or correspondence with Representative Andrew Collins, I believe this last week, that he put on social media where the governor said in writing, "We have to pass a balanced budget before." I mean, that was at least my reading of it, was that we would have to do that. So I wanted to follow up about, if we are not going to be, you know, the September date was mentioned earlier in tonight's presentation as far as when this board would be adopting a budget for next year. And if that is happening in September, I don't know that we can meet those exit criteria before that. And that really puts, you know, the pressure as far as being able to get something, you know, done before we would be asking for a millage extension. So I just, I want to raise that, because I am getting concerned about the timeline to meet all of these things. So, you know, we have to pass the balanced budget before we can meet the exit criteria. And I think frankly, we're going to have to meet those exit criteria and exit state control before moving on with a millage extension. And so I just want to put that out there, Mr. Boer. If you have thoughts, you're welcome to respond, or we can just save it for the actual meeting. But I think that's got to be a part of the discussion.
Yeah, I think that we could save it for the next meeting, because there's, there are, Kelsey's, Kelsey Bailey, for those watching, the CFO, he spoke about the balance budget and putting it together and then going, and then for us to go through that process to have it approved by September. And Superintendent Boer, I will go ahead and let you fill in, because you may have something that I'm not aware of, since.
I think Kelsey and I both probably want to, Mr. Bailey and I both want to respond a little bit to Ms. Nolan. So thank you for the question. And, you know, one of the things that probably, again, sharing for the audience, that maybe 18 months ago, the criteria. that um maybe eighteen months ago, the criteria that that we would never have anticipated being a challenge would have been the budget. But because of loss and enrollment and the pandemic, yeah, it's kind of created a a different pressure on us as a district to respond to that loss of enrollment staff appropriately. And as we talked about earlier tonight, still get a staff raise. But, you know, when we're coming in and telling you we're going to look for a staff raise, we think we're doing a pretty good job of executing. The other thing is of, um, and I believe Mr. Bailey may want to add to this, but I know Ms. Smith from the Department of Education, not only is asking some of the measures we're taking to work to reduce our budget and how we're moving and progressing, that will come out as a report at the State Board, but also asking how we're going to use some of our extra funds with some of our initial planning. Mr. Bailey, would you like to add?
Thank you, pretty much captured on that, but just to go back, although we will formally start talking about budget probably next month a little bit more, that's just because we get a a major influx of tax revenue here to really see how this uh projection went. Uh, we're constantly doing budget, all the actions you all take to have any kind of financial or fiscal governance impact, that plays into us formulating the budget. So we take all the votes, the vote you did for Hall and other things, and, I mean, those are all budgetary items, so it plays into effect on what we actually implement for next year. So uh based on September, September is a deadline that we actually have to have a budget voted upon. So when we present a draft budget, that may be different things that you have a question about, different allocations that we really need to maybe change and different things and along with if we get uh the extension of uh debt uh millage approved, we can actually add a portion of that into our budget before we actually submit it because we will have some capital improvement needs that can happen within that fiscal year. So all those things, just just realize we're constantly working on budget. I'm taking notes on pretty much everything you all talk about, so if this gonna, you know, cause any kind of uh uh causing a thing for the district or is this gonna, you know, reduce anything for the district? So we're constantly working on budget, although this one is set for this year, uh for next year, we are always thinking of way ahead of, you know, schedule, so.
Can I, very briefly, I will not, I will not get us off track, I just want to, what I really want to focus on as far as for the the upcoming meeting, a piece that I think needs to be added to this discussion is a pretty firm timeline of when we are going to do um do this because we talked about, I mean, under that fiscal governance, we're talking about budget and we're also talking about a potential debt extension. Um, if I understand it correctly, a debt extension, there are deadlines that we would have to make the decision that we would want to put that on the ballot. We cannot probably make that decision unless we know that whether or not we are going to be exiting state control. That is a big factor we have to know. And we won't know if we're exiting state control until, it's not, you know, I understand, Mr. Bailey, you're saying that you are constantly making budget adjustments, but our exit criteria require us to adopt, like, to pass, to adopt a budget that has no deficit spending. And the governor this last week in that letter said that we currently haven't met that goal. And so I am just really worried about us needing that within the timeframe. I mean, we may have to do our budgeting much earlier this year if we're trying to do it before these other things have to be done. So I just, I want us to add the the timeline issue into the discussion.
So the caveat to that, and we kind of discussed it maybe in one of the work sessions, uh, we have to address facilities. So uh if you have a roof come up uh for next year, you say you balance your budget, you're coming in with revenues a million over, you're going to add a million dollars to your fund balance. But we hadn't addressed the facilities, and we have two roofs that fail next year on a secondary or larger elementary, that's a million dollars apiece. So if you have to spend two million dollars, you've already have dipped and you're not in a in a positive scenario. So the budget's on paper, but you're going to end up in a deficit. So addressing facilities, and that's why I put it, when we talked about it, that's very important, whether it's debt extension or just having a facility discussion, because the budget, I mean, that's a big part of the budget, so where we go with capital improvements that are needed, so.
And Mr. Bailey and Superintendent Poore, it kind of goes back uh what Director Nolan is talking about is 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 how we talked about a budget um work session and we and um to where uh we could, everyone is able to be brought up to speed on um on, right on the budget. And um Mr. Bailey have, you know, he's been doing this a while for the district and he haven't been wrong yet, so until he's wrong. Um, uh, yeah, but um but 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 I think that uh that working budget session led by our CFO, um, Kelsey Bailey, is really going to help the entire board understand um right where uh we are and then how the board and and then how the budget actually works. Um, and so we will know and not necessarily, because we get a lot of, I'm sure people get a lot of incoming around our budgets, but um um too, we as a board just need to wrap our hands around it and and um and 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 better understand and and understand it uh right since we are the ones that have to approve it. Uh, Superintendent, you did unmute. Mr. Bailey, I saw you, you're still unmuted. Do you have anything on this?
I think you're you're right on target. We we have to have those budget work sessions, especially with many of you all just coming to the board and then maybe just coming to school finance. You won't, don't be expected to try to learn all this in a year, two years, even three years or anytime. You just need to have a good understanding and really set those those higher goals and standards that you want to see the district achieve at that point. And we actually, my job is actually to put finance behind it and actually, you know, do some cost analysis with anything that you all may bring and make sure we're staying financially solid. So but I'm available every month to do whatever you all need as far as a work session or you want to do something on weekends like that as well. So but it's something that's, I know, we probably at least need to, if not more, because we got a lot to tackle. We're going to tackle facilities, we're going to tackle extension of debt, we're going to tackle those uh those personnel pieces that we talked about tonight with the MAG study or the teacher salary schedule. I mean, all that's going to play into part where we're forecasting out three years.
Superintendent, thank you, uh, Mr. Bailey. Okay, um, okay, so uh we we started that uh con- conversation on budget that will continue in right in a couple of weeks. Um, the other um K is the um personnel policy review, and that is um pretty self-explanatory. Uh, we will review um some policies, uh Eric Walker, we we will look at sessions, please excuse me, section five, which will be a first reading, all of these will be first readings, five, six, and seven. Five is, of course, is a curriculum, just so y'all will know, five is a curriculum, six is uh school and home, com- community relations, and then uh seven is the finance and business management of it. And so and then we'll get into the Personnel Policy Manual for Teachers, which will be a second read. And of course, we will have budget, um, board comments to round us out. Uh, as you can see, this is a a full agenda. Uh, moving forward, we will continue to have full agendas because we have a lot of ground and a lot of things to cover. So um with that, do you, you guys are able to unmute and have any um thoughts or comments on this uh before we uh go ahead and and let the district to move forward in getting us our, getting those supporting documents? Uh, Superintendent Poore?
Thank you, Ms. Hatter. I I just want to bring up something about policy, and I know that this week we've received um as board members and as superintendent um multiple emails uh related to policies that that deal with equity, discrimination. Um, and I want you all to understand that uh there were several people in those emails that shared, "We actually ran compliance, yet they think we're missing the mark by not including something in policy." And how did it get left off when there was a um the change in two thousand seventeen to modify policies? And I talked to Ms. Hatter that I think I can give a very short, brief explanation tonight that might be helpful to all of you. When I came into the district, um, one of the things that was easily to recognize that many of the policies that were in the policy handbook had not been reviewed in, in some cases, as much as twenty years. And and twenty years not having it, having any kind of review. If you look at the current policy ham, policy handbook that we have, you'll see that those policies, while we had a community advisory board, were being reviewed by that advisory board at least every year. Um, we adopted the model policy from the Arkansas School Board Association. But when we adopted that, and and I believe we've even maybe said this to you, but maybe not frequently enough, is that when you adopt the model policy, it doesn't mean that you can't all put your own print on it, make modifications or changes. It also means that it always has to evolve as state laws change, such as things that are happening right now at the state legislative session. Our policies more than likely will have to change in several areas because of legislation that's being passed right now. So for community, you know, when they have a passion about something that we obviously all have seen this week about uh discrimination policies or policies that deal with equity, um, you as a board have the every opportunity to say, "Yeah, we want to discuss that." It actually probably could even come up as you review some of the policies that we have in store for the end of this month, to put your lens on it. And you can make a modification. That is in your realm. Um, we have made policy modifications, and Mr. Mason um and and Mr. Wood would attest to this, that were unique, that went away a little bit from the model policy because we felt felt it best met what Little Rock needed. But some of the old policies that were there, hey, if they're things that you really think bring value and would assist our community, you have every right to bring those back in. So I hope that's going to help not only you as board members, but maybe our community understand that a policy book evolves, but it has to evolve with the legal standing that is being created and it has to constantly be reviewed and updated to make sure that we're going to uphold those policies and people have to have ownership in it, which is really one of your primary roles. Ms. Hatter, I hope I covered kind of what you and I talked about, and I don't know if you have anything to add that maybe I missed. Um, but we thought that might help all of you. And of course, it becomes kind of a community statement then out to everyone as well um that that we received so many emails on.
Yeah, um, Director Nolan, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead, because I'm going to, because when I speak, I'm going to move it to, back to the next item. Go ahead.
Oh, um, well, on that topic, so I have two things, but on that topic, um, I'm in favor of putting our own print on that policy by adding a non-discrimination statement. Um, is that something that we want to entertain adding to the agenda or having the district present us with some proposed language or something like that? Um, as far as, you know, you you're right, we should have ownership of, ownership of it and and request it. Um, but I think that, at least for me, that that is something that I would be in favor of in, you know, I just want to throw that out there to the other board members. Do we want to talk about adding that? Maybe not to this agenda, I don't know. You know, obviously, our our meeting agendas are going until one o'clock in the morning, so I would be worried about adding too much to each agenda. But um it's not going to happen unless we ask for it to happen. So is that something that y'all are interested in?
I think that with policy, I think it's important to remember that, like, we're able, we, that's what the board do, we set policy. And so like, we're able to introduce um policy while working with, in in collaboration with the district, because we have to make sure that the district is able to execute what what directives we give. And um I think that uh policies, we're we're able to, right, revise them and then looking back at what used to be, which is a very large binder, um, and what is now, we're able to add, add back those policies that are relevant and unique um um and needed for our district as well as create uh newer policies that is relevant for to to today's time, today's students, today's climate. So um, yeah, I mean, um, and then two, I don't know if this is getting ahead, but, you know, uh, the district, the, myself and the district, we started talking about um policies and protections and um around the legislator, um, the, with this legislative session, um, around particularly the LGBTQ plus um communities and making sure that uh we are providing the necessary, are looking to provide the necessary trainings um for not only uh district staff, but like board, board members as well. At some point, we're going to have to um do that. So, yeah, we are always open for policies because that's what we are here to do. Um, I, we are at the tail end of our meeting and it feels like we're going to be here a little while, but um longer, depending on how much more comments we 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 have. But um Director Cal- Callaway and then Nolan, again.
Okay, this is an agenda meeting, right? So we're setting an agenda. So, uh, why are we having to discuss all of this and we can, like, do a a another meeting or even a meeting to uh um do it during a regular board meeting? Okay, I guess uh uh what I'm trying to say is, like, whenever we have an agenda meeting, sometimes they last to one o'clock. And if we discuss everything that I have a question of, we'll be here till one o'clock. You understand? So, uh, if, if this is an agenda meeting, this is a topic that we're going to discuss, does that mean we have to discuss it now?
Director, Director Callaway, you are um uh uh correct. This is not, this, this is an agenda meeting. We're not here to discuss any.
Any of these issues.
In depth. Um, however, what 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 the meet, what the agenda meeting is for is to bring the agenda that have been prepared by the district, by the superintendent and 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 myself uh to the board, for the board to review it, to understand what is um on it and 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 of course, any questions that have not already been directed um to the, to the administration um or myself, to have an opportunity for us for for that to be expressed here. But but no, we are not, we do not get into those items because we're going to get into them for sure on at at our normally, normal monthly meeting. So I think.
Oh, I'm so sorry, ju- but just to clarify, I am suggesting adding something to the agenda. So this is pertinent to an agenda item.
Well, I was told prior to that I couldn't bring up anything from uh to the agenda unless I did it five days prior to the agenda meeting. Is that correct?
At the agenda, at the agenda meeting, it is to review what the proposed agenda is, and then it is also to review, like, like what Director Nolan is talking about, that's a policy. So a- again, we can add that policy to be reviewed. It doesn't mean an action is going to be taken on it. It it could just be a conversation. It's going to be dependent upon the board. So.
Can I get a little clarity to that? I think that may help, Ms. Callaway. Um, the, the, when you made a suggestion to modify the agenda, that was for the regular board meeting. This would be the appropriate time for any board member. And and I think that's what Ms. Nolan's trying to potentially suggest is we want to add a policy discussion on discrimination. It it, you could also bring up other items and and Ms. Call, we we did work to make sure that the agenda item that you brought up the previous month is on our agenda for this month, uh, which is.
Right, but 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 you told me at that point in time was I had to to bring that at least five days before the agenda meeting. And if that's the case, wh- why was I told that? And she, and uh Ms. Nolan just brought something up that I think should be on the agenda, don't get me wrong, but she didn't have to wait five days.
No, it.
Is it timing?
I I'll just clarify. I'll just clarify real quick. And if I misspoke, Ms. Callaway, or we had a misunderstanding, it was five days prior to the regular meeting. The pre-agenda meeting is an open, open time for board members to have this type of discussion. So, you, you brought it up when it was right prior to our regular, normal, big meeting. And that's when I suggested that it needed to really come before we ever got the agenda posted for, like the meeting we're going to have on the 22nd.
I might have to go back and look that up.
I would just like to speak in support of the idea of us putting that on the agenda, at least as an FYI, to see where we are, what is our status quo, you know, for our non-discrimination policy at the moment? And where is it written and what the language is? I know that years ago, we had a policy that included sexual orientation. I don't recall that it included gender identity. If we're in compliance now, my guess is we're in compliance with the state or the federal guidelines, which would not include sexual orientation or gender identity. And I think this is a good time for us to take a look at that because I think that the context now is a time where we would want to really thoughtfully consider that and be able to be as clear as we can about where we stand.
And I agree with that. It needs to be discussed. I was just talking about a point of order.
Okay. So, Superintendent, we will modify that agenda and add that under the policies, which was something we were going to talk about anyway. So, with that, you guys, that is, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm, the Personnel, the Personnel Policy Manual for Teachers, it's a second read. So, that is the last thing on our agenda for the 22nd, outside of the board comments, which always is at the end. So, this is the agenda for the 22nd. And if everyone is in favor of that, we can direct the, the superintendent will direct his staff to put together our packet.
Are, I'm sorry, are we, did we agree or ask to add the discussion about the non-discrimination? Okay.
Yeah, we did.
Going on, okay. I just want to make sure that, I don't know if we have to vote on it or what the process is to add.
Me either.
And that is in our, sorry, I closed it. But that is one, the 1.14 in our.
Right.
Governance and Operations Manual. And it outlines what's the process, just FYI.
I read that.
Okay. So, if all minds are in favor, and, oh, and you guys, a quick point of reference. I almost forgot. The April 22nd meeting is in person. There will be a option, a virtual option to, to attend. But, but meetings from here on out will be in person. They will be closed right to the public. And just for the public, I'm trying to find my little note. And our superintendent might have to help me with that. But there is a directive that is saying that we need to meet in person in, at some point. And we may talk about that again as a board. Superintendent, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah. Actually, the directive, because the governor took away the mandate and now goes with guidance, there, we have to shift. And so, for a board, we will start to meet. Board members, that could be another policy matter for us to potentially take up of whether or not you would allow virtual meeting to take place. So, we'd probably have to go through policy in order to create the opportunity for someone to attend virtually and then be a casting vote. Because I don't think we have that currently in our policy right now. A board can miss as many as three meetings, but you've got to be, according to the rules of the state, you've got to be in person. And so, you all receive that from the Arkansas School Board Association. If you have anything that, that you differ in opinion on that, please don't hesitate to get back to Chairman O'Callaghan on that.
So, Mr. Por, does that mean that the employee hearing next week, is that virtual or is that in person?
It didn't say anything about the hearings, did it? Superintendent, go ahead.
I believe that we have set that up to be an in-person hearing. Am I correct on that, Mr. Walker? Or Mr. Lloyd, Dr. Lloyd, do you know that?
That's correct. It's in person with the board.
Anytime the board of directors meet, that's considered a meeting. And so, personnel hearings are also considered that as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to raise two things real quick. One is that policy about having directors be able to attend and participate in meetings virtually. I'm just going to go ahead and make the request that we develop some language that then the board could potentially vote on, not for the agenda for this month because that is too soon. But I do think that it, you know, it would be nice to put it out there for the board to vote yes or no on. I'm in favor of it. So, I'm going to make the request that we go ahead and develop that policy.
So, we, the board, would develop that. That is what we were talking about earlier. We, the board, will have to develop that. And so, we would either call a special meeting, which we can do, but to develop that, that, that policy. So, not to get into it now since it's 9:30, but that is something that like we will talk about and probably do, and we will do before the next meeting.
The other thing you could do, President Hatter or members of the board is you can always direct staff to create a draft and then you guys get your hands on it.
And there are other districts and other boards that do have that language. So, it would be something that we could, we could use from another district. The other thing I just want to mention, and I made a note and I wanted to make sure I come back to it. I received multiple comments and questions about our ability to vote at tonight's meeting because it is an agenda meeting. But we did take action item, action on action items. Prior to this meeting, I reached out to Mr. Por. And in conjunction with talking to Mr. Walker and Dr. O'All, we actually consulted with the Arkansas State School Boards Association about whether the board can vote at agenda meetings. And so, I want to, for the people who are watching, because I know some people have concerns, I'm happy to talk about it more in depth. But we did some significant research to make sure that this was permitted. And it's all about the amount of notice that went out and sufficient notice went out for this. And so, I just wanted to address that upfront because it was an area of concern for some people. So, I want to make sure that we're clear that we're, we are thinking about it, but it's, it's something that we, we took some time to look at. And that is all. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we said that.
All hearts and minds. Do anybody else got any questions, thoughts, concerns, last minute? Anything on that is for the good of the people watching or the board, the good of the board or the business of the district?
What time does Target close?
Oh, my God. Target is already, already closed. I just had to, I sent the message. I'm just saying.
Condolences, Ms. Hatter.
Um, okay. So, here we go, you guys. It's 9:30 on the dot. Do, are you ready to adjourn? And if so, can we get a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Okay. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. You guys have an amazing evening and we'll see each other on the 22nd.